Good morning. I'm Commissioner Dave, Chair of the Custer County Board of Commissioners. Today is Wednesday, May 4th, 2022, and the time is now 9:01. I will call to order this meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. If you do have cell phones, please silence them at this time. Washington has asked if he could lead us in the pledge and prayer this morning, and you can do that for us, sir.
My pleasure, Mr. Myron, United States of America, and the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's now pause for a moment and sign the prayer. Dear Lord, bless your world and all of its nations, bless America and all of its states, bless Custer County and all of its citizens, bless this meeting today. Give us wisdom and understanding, give us the ability to be, to listen and to be heard. Amen.
Do we have a blowball, please?
Commissioner Dave.
President.
Commissioner Canada.
Here.
Commissioner Flower. Attorney Clint Smith is accident and clerk to the Board of County Commissars.
Okay, audience introductions, why don't we start over here and work around. We're introducing ourselves, tell us who you are and then we'll.
Brother. Nikita Phillips, I live up here in.
Brad Olsley, I'm also in Bollamico.
Adrian Washington, Director of the Custer County Office of Emergency Safety Management.
Becky Olson, Citizen and Taxpayer, live out in Bonner area.
Rich Smith, live here in Muscat.
Joan Johnston, live in Westford.
Dr. Broxen, same place.
That's good, it's good, thank you.
Ellen Wilcox, from Westford.
Reggie Foster, GIO.
Stephen Wilcox, Westford.
Joey Wilcox, Westford.
Gordon Greer, Westford.
Judy Greer, Westford.
John Austin, we're property, we're side of the general.
Was Austin general.
Brad Davis, new resident for three months, I think.
Ed Holton, Fire Chief, what else?
J K, born here.
Ford Benson, back here running things, and Dorothy Carsten, our administrative assistant. If someone goes to speak later, we'll probably ask you to identify yourself against the record, and we'll assign to those online and they will speak. Any amendments to be agenda?
Hi, Senator.
Done here. We have three sets of minutes on the agenda for approval from February 2nd, February 16th, April 5th.
Commissioner, while we move, we approve the minutes of February 2nd, February 16th, and April 5th.
I have a motion on the floor to approve the minutes from February 2nd, February 16th, and April 5th. Any discussion on those? Those in favor of approving the minutes for those three dates, please signify by saying aye.
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 Commissioner, I have. If you can.
I don't, since yesterday, been on the phone, that's been a big business. Both the discussion on our sheriff's assignment as well, it's. The Harper issue, so just we'll keep covering both for this one.
Thank you, sir. I did reach out to Ronald and Crane, and they sent an application, let's go out, so we got business there. I've asked Dorothy if she would get that filled out and send that to them, so we're getting things lined up to move forward with offloading the bayers for Custer County Recycles, still don't have a firm date for that. I reached out to individual and asked for his suggestions about local banks in this region that we could maybe consider for credit carding, he's not gotten back to me for that yet, so.
Mine would be about the same, fill these phone calls and emails. And truck issues this morning, so. Any questions? That's all I have, and. Door meeting. Of course, this morning.
The only thing I tried to set the agenda was, we're posted yesterday at 10:00. Open the hallway, I'm looking for work and online.
Thank you. Okay. Would that bring this to public comment? If anyone has anything they would like to bring to the board now that was not on the agenda for later, please feel free to do so at this time. Staff reports. First one on the agenda is the airport.
Hobble up here, Bobby. He gave me his hand, he injured himself, but he fixed it with Allen.
Well, you all, yes, I'm good.
Good morning. Maybe hobble him.
So let's start with, so it's one of the two says. We got one sold, I see. 191.0 slow-mo, maybe the wind.
Speak loudly.
Okay. Total revenue is $953, nine cents. Leads us 3,431 gallons in a tank. Pretty slow-mo. Let's see, the 12,000 gallon tank is to be dropped off at the rate of five. So I have a crane coming in for cuddle. 60 ton truck crane, so they'll be here 10 o'clock, we'll pick it, put it on the pad and start looking what it's doing. That's about it.
I'll work with Brayden's mom on the crane, so we can get the check.
The car, we need any information, but it's straight home. That's really all I have of it in the tank, it's pretty slow out there. Windy, yeah, no one's flying, I can't. Any questions? Do we have a quote on the crane for offloading the tank? No, we don't. It was kind of hard to get a schedule on at this notice, so I neglected to ask what the price was, button change, and how we charged the drivers. I would imagine 10 bucks an hour, if you remember it, that's my idea, but Brayden can get that information. My theory was, get the crane there because if Chuck shows up, we can't get it off, we're in trouble.
I mean, it's a, how many ton?
It's a 40,000 pound tank, so it's a 60 ton crane.
Too bad it weren't happening at the same time.
Yeah, it's one darn thing.
What, you had another one coming?
We've got the bayers for the landfill. We've got the crane up for, so.
Yeah, this is a different company too, right?
Yeah, this is Huffy Crane Company down in. There's nothing up here in town with duty trip, too heavy.
Well, the price here probably is that.
You can recall, or let me know when you, because all, I can put on a credit card, or whatever.
That may be her.
Thanks for finding this.
Okay. Let's see, oh, first things first, here's this angry, I forgot to attach this angry cost for the hours recycled, so I don't know if you guys want me to just email it to you, or.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They gave you a quarter, 10,000 or something.
Yeah. I don't know, I called Brian Berry this morning to find out the timeline, and he didn't answer, so. I talked to him yesterday, but I didn't ask, I'll get that. A lot of people are jumping at the bill to get that, you know.
Yeah, I'd do some process. I just, I'm doing communication with Todd this morning, he had to say, well, you know, it costs more, well, come on, you know, it's one trip, probably one or two people at the most. It's kind of money, which is. I'm not going to support paying anymore to come back up here and train, train.
I do, yeah, sorry, you guys can keep that if you want, I can.
So anyways, they could announce their name, we're taking notes.
Oh, I'm Brian, Brian Lockhart.
Landfill.
I have to supervise it, sorry. Sorry about that, he was walking in the door, so I didn't, he ran on cue, so I didn't bother to introduce him, my fault. So, yeah, we'll see. I did bring the math back in for the expansion, I don't know if you guys have pulled on that today. I guess I wasn't sure how that.
You could do it very in staff before, I guess.
It's just, it's just going from that 163 years to the 40s or something, so. I think that was our discussion the other day during that meeting, that he would probably bring that to us through your staff.
Just for the records, everybody understands, he's talking about the landfill expansion for, the landfill, you've all been there probably, and the engineering's been done, everything's working, and he's got a great plan for expansion that would get us to 130 years. But in order for that, we're going to do it in two pieces, and so the first piece is 40 year piece.
40 years, 44 years with the other trenches.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the proposed landfill expansion to include trenches G, H, and I, and a 40-year area landfill.
I'll say.
Motion on the floor to approve the expansions, the 40-year expansions, the trenches, even the trench.
HG and.
HG and I. Trenches HG and I and the 40-year expansion. Any discussion on that? Anything from the floor? So the expansion process, engineer started this down, and so moving forward, there is no more fees that we have to pay as far as the expansion. It's just, now it's just waiting for the state, once the engineer gives the state, the state. So hopefully by, hopefully in another two months, we'll have the approval from the state. So all the money is taken there.
I think we budgeted last year, this year, the total base out, didn't we?
Yeah, the total engineering was $115,000, and so it was over starting in 2020, so. And then after that, we do that as the normal scope of operations, where the trenches will be digging, and the standard operation.
When was it started? I missed that year.
2020.
2020.
Thank you.
Yep.
And to answer your question, we also budgeted, we might be trying to break those two trenches, so we have to, we haven't had that expense yet, so.
I spoke to a surveyor, so I'm in the process of getting back on to, I would like to get another diagram of the trenches from Golden before, before we move forward, I email them, okay? I just asked him basically, you know, that if, you know, from the property line to the first trench, if that is a guideline from the state, or if they just decide that, because I don't want to, I don't want to start.
Too close.
Too close, right, so I'm just going to wait, get the email back from them.
Somebody asked me, I'll ask you, coming in from the entrance, the existing entrance to the landfill, the traffic, number one going to the trenches, and number two going to that area of landfill, we're going to start. I'm assuming, try to come around and do recycles, building and the way the trenches.
Yeah, so they'll probably, probably go behind the roll-off wing two.
Oh, go all the way, okay. And then same with the earth landfill.
Same here.
So we wouldn't have that landfill traffic by curbing that recycling.
Well, we're going to keep that separate, so. Anything else on that statement?
Can you review that motion?
The motion on the floor is to approve the landfill expansion for the 40-year expansion of trenches H, D.
And technically, the 40-year plan is the area of landfill.
40-year is the area landfill, and the trenches should give us, he said, maybe three, three or four. This depends on the volume, we have one more volume. Other than that, I think that's all I have. If you're those in favor of approving that, signify by saying aye.
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 Great, sorry, yeah, it's a good thing to get, get done, so, I don't know, Golda said probably two weeks to get to the state. So all that you guys, I'm seeing that.
I also ask.
Yes.
I know you're here for landfill reporters, you've been wearing two hats in the last numerous months, so in the, in view of the fact that we do not have Custer County Recycles for yet, I would ask, even though I went out and looked yesterday, to see that the electrical panel, the location down on the inside of that building, it's in the necessity. Sort of right there to the west.
Yes.
So the proposed office building is built set on north west corner of that building, oriented south, correct?
Yes, probably, I, we have other options too, maybe. Depending on the survey of these trenches, we might be able to east of the buildings. It should give us more room, but we've got to see the survey, how close it is to that building. But yeah, that's another discussion, we're telling you myself, new, and for you actually to decide what we want to do with it, with an office.
Would, what would be your second best recommendation for more of those points?
Going off the east.
North, middle, or south?
Probably south. East.
He didn't give us much.
Yeah.
And you still believe attaching that office building to the recycle buildings is the best route, or do you believe it could be separated by?
You know, it, I don't know, that's a good question. Without having the survey done, I don't know if it's, how much room we're going to have to sell. So. I'll have to wait to, I got to get with Joanie to find out when she, when we need to move forward with the office, if we need to do it this year, or if it's.
Yeah, I would say we need to stand, hopefully in June.
In June, okay. Okay.
They're working on a set of, drawing for that activity.
Okay, well, hopefully Golden will email me within the next week, and then I'll get a survey done. I can get a survey based off of what I have, but I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
Right, yeah. And we don't have to survey the area still yet, we just. Nope, I'm going to plug it since you're. I'm going to leave this in your office, too. Produce the little heads.
Produce the little heads. Oh, we are waiting uh. I will also announce that uh. We will not be having an I P report this morning, so that I will be. Skip over.
City of Hill two thirty is scheduled to be uh happening tomorrow. That's the name, Mr. Chairman. Correct, yes, we have the legislators have a very long.
Well, it's good. You can't do that, you have to go through everything line by line. Right here in front of us, man.
Okay, okay. Okay. I'm looking at the slab benefits, the food systems. As you can see, they're they're up a little bit this month where it's hanging right in there and. And then Colorado works, we're. They don't have many which is good and just staying with the same. Yeah, yeah. Then you gotta leave. We're writing down on this program. But you can see that it's still in March, we still have eleven. And it looks different February, it's February is when we do a other big one for everybody that applied in November and December and January. So that's why it looks so crazy. We've had more applications this year than we've ever had. And program is ended, it's ended at the end of April. And so next month I'll be able to give you some actual numbers of how many families we serve. Part of that was because costs of building was up so much. And they raised the guidelines because of that, and so we had more people applying and that was both that program.
So what happens when it ends?
It's just gone.
And then what happens? People would.
Well, it's 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 just a program that runs from November through April.
So it's gonna start again.
It'll start in November. It goes through the winter, that's what it does, it's to help them get through the winter. So. And then Medicaid transportation, there's something wonky in March and February, so I need to look those numbers. I just noticed that right now. We may have until we get the payroll off and so. But it's probably right around the same time. That's no county dollars anymore now, but we spend fair amount of time in Medicaid transportation.
Yeah. While we're on the medical transport, I know when you looked into your council board last Friday. That uh of course the names of the recipients who we acted, but I had asked a question. Decided I would ask that today, didn't get an answer Friday, so I could ask you today. Who is providing that transportation? Is that coming out of your office or your home? There were a lot of names or a lot of.
Yeah, no, uh Rotary Transport sometime.
Still doing it.
Yeah, Rotary will transport and then a lot of it is uh the individual themselves.
So they get reimbursed.
They can get reimbursed. If Medicaid is gonna pay for the trip, I mean, if they're gonna go to the doctor, they take case. Then they can get reimbursed and they can use their own vehicle. So that's why you're seeing so many different. There's a lot and there's a lot to it. We have to, we have to type out something that they have to take the doctor with the name, the address, doctor, where they're going, how many miles. Then we have to enter it into the system to get reimbursed and we have to track it to make sure everything's coming back. So we spend a lot of time on that. And we are in the process of res certification, revaluation, revaluation. Which they had changed and it's a bloody nightmare. And we are still trying to get that done because you have to have a number for this, you have to have a number for that and it's just crazy, but we're working on it. But a lot of people depend on that on Medicaid transportation. And the only other thing that they can do, we don't do it would be Meg Ride, you custom can. That's all we've done. Meg ride away to it, yeah. So we're we're trying to get that, we're trying to get it revalued, revalidated, but it's not been. An easy thing and anytime we call somebody, they don't know, so they can pray you over here and it's just. Interview outreach. I still have some done in there in March. We changed, they changed your system on that and. And then it's not that. You started block round, I finally got some money. Uh they hired somebody new to replace uh to the fastway and um. She came with a hard rate. Got to get some stuff worked out and then they told me that I have funds, so I was excited about that, so.
But you're paying them to check the word of the law.
No, no, because they just told me that I had these firms.
Oh, you just.
I just, I just. Yeah, she told me, yeah, that it went in. The end of October or November and I think that's the new fastway. And so I normally had a couple hundred dollars left, you know, after I spent that in January. So now I have funding now, so. Yep. Yes, indeed. So yeah, that's what I said, maybe for letting you know that, thank you so much. And then this is our T F A numbers and they have been low, especially in February, the weather was horrible when we did distribution. Uh March was still kind of bad, I don't have April on here, you have probably better, they have better distribution now. Because the weather was. More likable, let's say, was it snowing or some ridiculous thing was happening? So. Question about anything?
You were clear enough.
What was I doing? Or fully step in um Medicaid Department of Health Care Policy and Finance. Is uh they're doing a rebound on. How determinations and everything, trying to get everybody that's locked into Medicaid unlocked. And so we have a new applicant, a new uh application, we have new recertification form that they fill out, which. We hate and they hate because they're very confusing, they don't flow. They're instead of being this way, they're all flowing like that, people come in and pay the same stuff, they don't know where they're supposed to sign. They're a mess, but anyhow, we're working through that. And then in June, they're doing a um. Call that like a visit, no, a visit, we're gonna do a place of in-house, uh we do that every so many years, it's March time. So they're gonna look at cases and see what's going on and that type of stuff, so we'll be doing that in June. So I'm getting ready for that, I've been so. It's seven modules, maybe take up like two an hour, allow. Only gotten three so far. I stay afterward and work on module because they're so long, but anyhow, we'll be doing that in June. So yeah, Medicaid's been on top of our flight most of the time, trying to make sure we're getting all the trainings done and everything else, the rebound. But it's gonna be when they lock these people, it's not gonna be a good time for some of them, so. We're gonna get a lot of phone calls right today, right now. And now I have people call me because. It's sending out notices to people that are no longer eligible or Medicaid because their supplementary security income, which is through. So security has stopped. And they're going, it hasn't stopped, why isn't it stopping? So I called to security and they said, it's not stopping, I don't know what's going on. So we got people calling us about that, so yeah. Anybody got any questions?
Been locked in for a long time, hasn't it?
Yep.
So that.
They they're locked there since about twenty twenty. Same with the food benefits, we're gonna give them the maximum benefits. And when that goes out, that's gonna be shocker, a shocker. Definitely, it's gonna be shocking. Should they call us right now because at the beginning of the month, they just get the benefits they should get. And they're constantly calling, oh, where's the rest of my benefits? Last month I got this. And then we explain to them again that the rest of them will be coming, that this is. So yeah, it's gonna be a shock.
Yes.
On another topic, okay. Do you well? Oh, okay, okay.
You called me the other day and asked. If I was someone region three. I as a group to help distribute funding. Didn't know what you. Grant to deal with. The Office of Behavioral Health.
Okay.
I told him I would do a little thinking on that.
Yeah.
Should've talked to you probably before today, but. Wrong to shuffle.
Okay.
Uh the other part of my question is, and I didn't mention this to him, that I did not have strong background in the behavioral health. So he heard of that, but there were. My name was given to him by somebody uh. Department of Services.
Are they wanting that commissioner itself?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, they probably want a commissioner.
They said with the tour commissioner, but we also consider other people and. That's what I should have come and talked to you about is if somebody in your office obviously would be more well qualified than myself, but maybe we.
Okay, so yeah, we just need to chat about that.
You responded, yeah, my D D sent me a follow-up email today.
Okay, so yeah, maybe a little bit more information than faculty. But I I could do some research and find out. Oh, okay, that's all of it, that would be great. Yeah, yeah, that's fine, yeah, send me that and then we'll take a look at it.
Just one other thought on.
Okay.
Benefits that are expiring overall because COVID. Might be a good idea to get something out um maybe P I O Y. Explain, here's what's happening.
Oh, well, that's.
You not have to be answering the phone much more.
Wow.
And it would be good for the people to know.
This, well, the state sends out notices to these people every month for food benefits.
But obviously they're not reading.
Well, no, it's, they're confusing, that's why.
So there might be a better way to say it. Point is, there might be a better way for us to say it. Help everybody understand.
Yeah. Yeah.
You got used to this. It's just P S, some way. Something.
Yeah. Okay.
I might talk to Reggie.
Okay, alright.
Some art newspaper or flyer or whatever.
Okay, alright.
Problem, even that problem that you don't know.
But that's the point, you don't know.
We have no idea what's gonna happen, but they keep stating that, yeah, um we just don't know. And now with, especially the food. With inflation that's going on and food's costing more. They may.
They may keep it on forever.
They may keep going, I I just don't know. And 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 the state doesn't know, they kinda get it from the best and so it's just, they're just.
Just something to think about.
Yes. Yeah.
What if they cold cock you tomorrow?
I know, and they could, I'm I'm there, hopefully they're gonna get a little bit more.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, alright, thanks, guys. You had later, have a nice stretch of your day.
You too.
Oh, yeah.
Speaking guys up, so pass that down.
Right.
So I P is. Has no report, so we will be going on to. Twenty-five minutes now.
Yeah, speak up loudly, this is Adrian Washington, our office of emergency man.
Really, guys, I'll have any report. Right, right, well, I just wanna find out just a couple things and report. E M P C M J grant for two thousand twenty-one was fully reimbursed by the state in the amount of thirty-eight thousand dollars. And we are still pending reimbursement for our H M P grant in the neighborhood of twenty-nine thousand three hundred and ninety dollars. From the state, that brings us somewhere near to about sixty-five thousand dollars in reimbursement. Our volunteer hours, as you know, are up significantly for the month of April. Uh at forty point five hours, uh thirty-seven point five of those hours were. Uh attributed to Gina Maloney, my only assistant. And then Linda Pollock had six hours. On the activity reports for April, I'd like to point out. Three dates, April twelfth. April seventeenth and April twenty-second. Uh on those dates, we had a fire on Old Creek Gray, our gray at. Still clock in the morning around two. On April seventeenth, we had the Verdemon Fire of three hundred and twenty-one acres. And then on April twenty-second, had another fire of twenty-nine acres in the North Creek area. Which is around Wedmore. So far this year, we've burnt over three hundred and sixty-five total acres. Which is more acres that we burnt this year than in the last probably four years in Custer County. A major concern this year that given the state of the weather, the dryness. And we had twenty-five days of red flag wind warnings in the month of April. And that is continuing in the month of A. This uh month of A, so our, no, what's got up court makes me nervous. I I can't fudge and goes to tell the truth. Nothing but the truth, so I can't fudge anything today, but I'm I'm concerned. Uh we went into stage one fire restrictions uh last week. And I believe our fire services have responded to um numerous uh reports of people burning. And so we have to do a better job of giving the message out that we are in stage one and that means that there are no outside fires whatsoever. Are permitted at this time in the county. But our responses so far this year, I have some notes. I I asked Roden Ridge to monitor and to um give me a report on the expenses. Roden Ridge responded to all three of our incidents. And so far, they have expended simply in April, six thousand three hundred and seventy-four dollars. In responses to emergencies within the county. Four thousand seven hundred dollars is expense related to equipment. They incurred fifty-two hours of overtime, uh somewhere in the neighborhood of about seventeen hundred dollars for that. And then in addition to that, on the Wedmore Fire, uh my office supplied uh in conjunction with Red Cross Mills to firefighters. Two dinner mills, uh a lunch mill, a breakfast mill. And the expenses of that were covered by Red Cross for three quarters of the bill. And then we went out to a company called Emergency Incident Support to provide breakfast mills. Uh my concern. It's not that we support our firefighters, but that we currently do not have a line item in the county budget for supporting. Emergency management and the expenses that we incur when we're assisting the fire agencies. Logistically and uh these fire responses. And so I have a proposal to um ask you to consider an emergency fund. For the county. Our neighboring counties in Fremont and Werkenow County. Uh, basically, almost all the counties have a designated emergency fund. That can be used only in support of those, uh, expenses related to our response to disasters within. The county. My proposal is that you establish an initial funding budget of, uh, twenty thousand dollars. Uh, and I say tentatively because we just don't know what kind of, um. Fire season and fire is our primary emergency in the county. We do not know what those expenses are going to be. For the remainder of the year. And as I said, we spent about seventy-five hundred dollars so far on three incidents in total. Uh, the question it raises is where in the budget can we get that funding? To support emergency services for? And I propose that we consider. Using some of the state reimbursement money for the EMPG grant and for the hazard mitigation grant to fund that twenty thousand dollar emergency fund. As I mentioned, we have, um, pending about sixty-five thousand dollars in reimbursements to my department coming from the state. I'm proposing that, um, we direct our finance person to, uh, look at this. The funds have been received. I know thirty-eight thousand has been received this in the budget. And I'm proposing that we, uh, transfer some of that revenue into an emergency services fund. And make those funds avail- available to reimburse county agencies and my department for expenses incurred. In the logistical support of wildfires within the county. And I think that money is available because it was not designated into two thousand and twenty-two budget.
These reimbursements on these grants for.
These are reimbursements for, uh, the M, EMPG grant reimburses the county for fifty percent. Of the expenses for the Office of Emergency Management. And those funds typically go into, uh, a general fund account, and I believe that is where they, uh, currently reside. Uh, we have in our, uh, new finance program, uh, we are developing a system so that I can better track those funds. As they are being received, but I did note in my report, financial report this morning that thirty-eight thousand dollars. Went into revenues for emergency management. And that revenue is not designated for expenditure in the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two.
Okay, that kind of makes sense. I think I, I need to make an overarching statement so that the public can understand where we are. Uh, and then I got specific questions. So our operating, uh, expenses for this county. To do the operations of the things you just heard staff reports on, the normal stuff, you didn't get the road bridge report back yesterday, things like that. Is a total of four point five million dollars. The wages and benefits are four point six for this county. We have ninety-one employees. Uh, the rest of our appetite costs us eight million dollars. That comes from grants and volunteer labor. And that's where a lot of this is funded. And so it's important that, uh, we keep. And that's why I say reimbursed and all that. So, so that's what it takes to operate the county right now. Without going to the taxpayer for, for additional money, although the grants come from taxpayers somewhere, right? So we are very careful about what we go for and, and want to do, want to good steward of all of them. And so, um, so that, look, we, he's talking about some of this and you've heard it today, some of this stuff in budget. We have a budget meeting every, every October and we look at what things have cost us and we allocate things throughout the year. There's rollover money from each year because sometimes you can't guess exactly what you get, thing price, there'll be money. And we have to always operate positively. We cannot go in debt as a county. So that's why it's important when we make deliberate decisions. He's bringing something to us today that we can't vote on today. Cause it's not on the agenda, but it's an option and we need to get more data. And my, this is the point I want to make. Uh, I, you've mentioned several things that we have a, a good understanding for them to have that. More data and some options of where that's gonna come from in Braden and our, our finance office. That's my comment. So, uh, uh, and some of the other things, though, twenty thousand dollars. Be a little more explicit on, you said some things to reimburse, like lunches when the crews are out on the, whatever. And how does that relate to the other services, like fire department up here? And the other counties that would be supporting us and all that. So we would need the whole picture and then we can decide. Really make a, a good, uh, budget that might be more or less, uh, than on the grants, so. That's just a statement. I appreciate you bringing this to us, so.
Appreciate it. Um, so Adrian, you mentioned your EMP grant and your hazard mitigation grant reimbursement dollars. Received by the county. Occurred in twenty twenty-two. That reimbursement amount, thirty-eight thousand, was for expenses incurred in twenty twenty-one, right? So, uh. Those dollars were to reimburse for expenses occurred last year. Uh, as we spoke, I support the idea of getting a line item with some dollars in it. To avoid what we've gone through in the last three weeks. You specifically mentioned to offset the expenses of wildfires. I'm assuming there may be other. Circumstances that would require some funding as well, not just wildfires or factor requests.
Um, not simply wildfires. So I would just put it under a disaster response fund, emergency fund. Because, uh, currently Gina is on state assignment at the state E O C on the Avian Food Task Force. Receiving the depopulation, uh, efforts of that task force happening in the state right now. And we have, we could have an A, A, food volunteering customer counting that there's no funding available to actually respond to that.
So your request of twenty thousand, obviously with the current budget expense to the general fund, uh, for twenty twenty-two. And I think Commissioner Tanda alluded to that. Presents a little bit of a setup, so to say, this big enough money up, and I appreciate your offer of utilizing some of those grant dollars. That have been reimbursed to the state or to the county, but we also have to be aware that was the money already expended, so. It sounds good, but it's. First for expenses that are incurred, so it's gonna hit the general fund in a negative sense one way or the other. I also, I guess my comment to the other commissioners is. What's gonna be most appropriate for us to do a line item, finance, or deal with these expenses as they occur? Uh, I'm not sure dealing with them as they occur is very forward thinking, but we don't have a. This is not a budget expense request. I don't know how, what's best to handle that for twenty twenty-two. I suspect we're on the leading edge of these needs and these expenses. I don't think we're done with fire season. Hope it may be, it may true for me is gonna have to be.
And my, my concern is, is also. Is, I'm, sometimes you rob Peter to pay Paul, and like I said, the majority of these, these expenses in response to the wildfires. Were incurred by the Roden Bridge Department. I rely on them significantly to support our local government agencies when they respond to fires. Uh, these expenses that Roden Ridge incurred were not in the budget. Right, that the overtime dollars that they spent in support of this comes out of their overall budget. And I can't continue to, uh, well, I can't, and, and they'll participate. But I think it's unfair to that department to bear the brunt of the cost of our response to.
Right, but that's our job to move money where it's the best for the county, citizens, protection, health, and safety. So it can be done when we just got.
No, it, it can be done. And the only way that we have, the only mechanism is to, uh, go to a resolution. We'd have to have a, a resolution to move, uh, revenue that, in all use of term, unanticipated was. It was anticipated but unanticipated in our budget process in back in September. So we knew the receipts were coming in. Unfortunately, we did not track those expenses correctly. So I'm not saying you have a, a secret pot of money, but in one respect, we have sixty thousand dollars in revenue that was not allocated. In two thousand and twenty-two's budget. And that's the only mechanism that I am aware of. Of funding, funding that we could use, and I think it would be a good use of those funds.
Well, rather than belabor that, because we've got a lot of things to cover, we need that detail, we need to get prepared. Look at that, and you, you called it, uh, a fund that's sitting there not being analyzed, but maybe it was. Uh, we don't, we, we just need to have a meeting where we can really understand it after you get the specifics.
Or it's so, um, I will get on the calendar then for sometime in the middle of, um, May. To come before the board with a solid. Resolution or in the, in the meeting, and if it's. So then perhaps at the mid-month, you can put together a resolution. Cause I'm, I'm firm on the twenty thousand, we can just make sure we have identified exactly where it needs to come from, that we can get it from there. But we need a resolution from the board to.
And we need a discussion.
And a discussion.
Yeah, and the expenses we'll incur will be on this. Smaller incident where we are taking care of the windows. When they go to.
And then with that in mind, I will pay this one bill out of my account, cause it needs to be paid. It's already been expended. I can't reimburse Roden Bridge, but I can reimburse this emergency incident support. I'll do that on my budget currently. Or, no, it's not.
We incur these expenses on a smaller incident.
Yes.
When they go to a larger incident with the state or the bed moving in, at that point, then the reimbursements will be coming through that system, yes.
And with that in mind, I'll address that a county has to have money to turn skin in the game. We cannot go to the store, the state for reimbursement if we don't expend county resources financially. So, yes, to your question, and we will continue to operate, but I really do believe. The situation is gonna get worse before it gets better.
I'm assuming you are intending to have sole spending authority on that twenty thousand.
You are assuming correctly, sir. Because I think it needs to be in one department, and I think it has to be clear in whatever we have got, that it only can be used. For disaster response, emergency disaster response, not, it's not to be used for day-to-day operational needs. Or any department in the county. And then finally. My notes, I have, um, just a reminder. That, um. There's training for elected officials on May thirteenth. From, uh, nine until noon. Nine until noon, about noon, and I'll be at the Ramon Boardroom. Ramon Sanitation District Boardroom.
Oh, it is. I have it at the library.
Okay, we, we're not able to secure that, so we moved it to the boardroom. Basin Boardroom. Yes, I don't feel.
Oh, you're down in the back too?
Yeah, I'm sick of the dog, but I'll be in another camp, in another state. And then I'll invite, uh, elected officials from the county and from the two cities to attend that meeting as well.
Yeah, and you might make note that you resumed your C D S meeting, and that's important.
Many word out there, but. Get word is out. They received the email this morning. We set the date for the community, uh, emergency services meeting of the tomorrow. Uh, Eddie Lemon and Lemon both.
Had to make an assumption that that's.
Not that, actually, that'll be on the Wedmont Fire District.
Yes, he does. I see shaking his head.
Yeah. My report.
Come back here.
You guys wanna shake hands?
You can shake, and you can take your hands, or we'll be in trouble.
I have a question. The meeting you set that there were stage one fire restrictions and there's no outside burns.
In the county areas, there is no outside burn. The U S Forest Service has not yet, but they were meeting.
But I'm looking at the county website, and on stage one, it says campfire in developed areas, yes. Open fire in developed areas, yes. Agricultural burns, yes. I'm looking at the county website. So I called dispatch the other night to see if I could have a campfire in my designated ring in my yard. And they said normally I could under stage one, but the winds would be seventeen miles an hour. So we've got information that is incorrect, conflicting.
And so undeveloped, so there are no, no developed campfires.
Well, it doesn't say campfires, it's developed areas. My backyard is developed.
The definition and what is that? Good point, though, we need to do promise.
She is really fast. Well, this is our treasure for those of you that don't know Virginia. And, uh. Well, they all paid taxes, but some of you may not have seen her face.
I didn't actually say that.
Okay, I move you, except you.
Okay, so you have a motion on the floor to accept the trade's report. For the month of March. Any discussion on that?
Are we tracking like we normally should this time of year?
Uh, yeah.
Well, assuming that very bottom line, it's not tied with a total.
Any other questions, gentlemen? You, I know you guys don't have a copy of this in front of you. Any questions on the floor, though? Alright. Uh, those in favor of accepting the monthly treasurer's report for the month, month of March. Signified by saying aye.
Just so you know, we're standing about seven million bucks in the bank.
And Greg and I are talking about fixing that county general so different, but so.
You can't get their money, you have to keep by statute. Stay pod. Okay.
That's why I want the trust.
So say it loud enough. We will be here at a quarter after.
Oh, it's important.
I'll say.
Motion to defer the West Custer Library Report. Okay, consideration of repair to the county courthouse roof.
Okay, I put this on the agenda, and I'll bring everybody up to Sweden Commission and public. Our courthouse has a bunch of leaks in the roof. You can imagine, there's other buildings in the county that have also leaks. Uh and so we have a maintenance fund that we have to maintain the buildings, but we don't have a maintenance money to actually. Do a major project. Uh and we originally put this together for a grant that it later didn't qualify for, so we have a cost of our courthouse. Uh roof repair, and it came in in two pieces. There's a bunch of the roof that's tarred and then has gravel on it, and then there's a bunch of the roof that doesn't have. So just different process. It came in in two parts. It was forty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy for. Remove the gravel all the way and put on the roof, uh and then the other part was fourteen thousand. Uh so it's smaller. So all I wanted to do today, I did want to uh. I want to introduce it, uh we need to discuss it, and I understand that we had already asked Tom to already put a request out. Working the maintenance, the repair for another company, and we did, we're late getting what came in, uh didn't come in. And so I understand that there's another company that may be putting a bid in.
I believe there is someone coming to look at that on Friday.
So what I suggest is that we take this bid and then figure out how we're going to. Proceed with that in another meeting to consider selecting somebody to repair it and or first of all, figure out where that money is coming from. Go from there would be my recommendation. So that's in way of discussion, I would move that uh. That we would include this proposal that we already have uh in the consideration on the other one. Deal with it in discussion.
So I guess I believe we need to have another bid come in, uh if not more than one. Just one bid and uh. So I would be. I would be very open to deferring this decision to.
It's gonna be included, so the motion is just included.
Yeah, I think we need our. Policy, purchasing policy.
So I think this would be more of a discussion rather than a consideration today. So let's uh keep that on file. More coming in on Friday. Could you repeat that, sir?
I'm just moving and we defer doing any action on this one that we collected separately for a grant. Go through with that and comply with the other ones that should have been there before and are awaiting.
Yeah, most on the board to. Defer this to a future time when we have more. Any discussion on that now?
I would just say that it wasn't that the end of it was late. We got weathered out and I just never rescheduled that. It wouldn't have been. The program I have tomorrow obviously would not have worked.
Anything from the floor on that?
So Dorothy and I had a conversation about. What if anything of your guys' learnings into as an obstacle called historical societies? She researched that, could not find anything.
Mean. Right, or mean or use a grant there.
What can we do to this roof if in fact this building is on the historic?
Makes it harder.
Couldn't find any documentation this building was on historical history. Iowa started what if something else different, I certainly.
I do have comments on that as that was my retired, my previous profession. If you have the roof that's flat and you're keeping it flat, it's not visible from the ground. It's not going to cause any problems with the disturb.
I think we should also consider the possibility for a pitch recall.
Even if you put a pitch on it, it's depending on how high the pitch is. It's probably not going to be super visible unless you put a huge pitch onto it. And then it would just be like setting, sending a letter to the state and letting them know what you're doing. And that she would, you know, give an approval. It's not a huge issue as long as you don't like put it, you know, twelve foot high.
But we don't even know if it's on the register.
No, I couldn't. I thought it was. I mean, I.
And that would be, that was wanting to be my question to you if there is a particular place we can go to. Verify whether or not we are.
Yeah, I thought it was on the state register, not the national, but if you can't find it, maybe it's not. I'd have to.
So anyway, just a point of consideration to move forward with that project.
I remember when Hope Lutheran got on the historical registry and they came out with a placard and it was, it was very well known that to, to anybody involved in church. There was a even a framed document and you couldn't touch, you couldn't attach anything to the building. You couldn't. So it's got pros and cons, but I think you would know if it was on historical registry.
I would think so.
Anything else? Anything in favor of postponing this date to be determined? Next step is our consideration of the ARPA funds for remaining.
For the purpose of not to number four.
Correct. For the purpose of four remaining.
We have four outstanding applications. They all outstanding, but there are four that are. And Andrew's here, I think.
Good morning, gentlemen. So what I'm prepared to present to you are some recommendations for the four applications that. You wanted some more input on. And. I'll just take them in order. And. If you don't mind, I'll go ahead and not only refer to them by their number, but also mention the applicant and what. The application is for. Is that all right with you all? Last meeting, we kept it somewhat anonymous.
We have, we have that information in front of us now. I think for this discussion, that would probably be beneficial.
All right. The first one, which was C three, was the Custer County Sheriff's application for funds to help finance an apartment building. I've been in communication with Sheriff Byerly this morning regarding this. And there's a few issues that come to bear on this and one is that the. Apartment building that they were looking at may be off the market now. Yeah, okay, you check. And so my recommendation to you concerning this application is that the ARPA committee reconvene. And come back to you with a recommendation for the funds that we were recommending for that particular project.
Okay, so to refresh our memories, there are how many applicants we considered initially and how many weren't considered? Fifty-four, sorry, whatever we are.
We had, we had fifty-one applications. And nineteen that were declined, thirty-two that were approved and twelve of those thirty-two were partially approved. This was one of those that was partially approved.
Okay, and so that's why I'm bringing it up. So you were recommending that you take it back to the committee. To consider funding something new or something that is partially funded maybe. If you're going to rip right.
We'll bring a new recommendation to you concerning these, but it's, it could be that you would want to still use. Those funds that we were recommending for the sheriff's project for something having to do with the sheriff's housing issues. But I think that just right now, as we've got a few things moving right now. It'd be best for the ARPA committee to come back to you with another recommendation or same recommendation, just with having reconsidered the issues that are before.
Timeline wise, that's not an issue.
I don't believe there's an issue with my moment.
I would throw out a suggestion. Without disrespect, that maybe the commissioners can. Lack of better words, set on this particular dollar amount and decide what we want to do. Whether we want to send it back to the, uh, the committee or whether we want to do something different. Necessarily have the issue with sending it to the committee, but I'd like time for us to digest that.
Well, not that idea would happen, might you anyway, because if you're in need of time, we don't have to accept their recommendations. That's another I could give with me.
Yeah, I just, I just like to have some caliber time for the officials to discuss this. So we understand and we very well could come back and ask.
That's fine. I think for all practical purposes, yes, because the project was specifically with one particular apartment building that was for sale. And. There were some other concerns as to whether or not the whole project was feasible with it not being fully funded.
Yeah, and I guess I'll just be honest with you that we said, I, I would think that potentially it's if we send. That back to the committee, they may part and parcel that out into, let's say for example, six other recommendations. I'd just like to have often have a discussion about that dollar amount, what commissioners would like to be moved.
Knowing the interest of the committee, it could also be that they would recommend a revision of the application, but would end up being the same sort of results like. Looking at trying to figure out how to supplement some housing for deputies. Yes.
As part of the ARPA committee, one thing that we, the ARPA committee just found out this morning about this. The thing, and so we haven't had time to grasp it either. So I, you know, personally, I think it's better to set it aside and, and. Talk about it because it's obviously not important to decide right now. And I'm not sure everybody's even aware of it this morning. Are you, Andrew? I think everyone responded from the ARPA committee to you.
Uh, no, not all responded. It's from my reporting to them about.
Yes, I mean, that's the first box.
My communication was.
Right.
Shared by, yes.
And so I, I, I know Carol and myself had, had seen your text, but I think there's, there's other members that haven't probably seen the text yet.
Yeah, that's true.
So I would move to postpone any action on C three pending further specifications.
I'll say.
Be for action on C three, postpone. I was hearing this morning, postpone any action on C three. Need more discussion on that. Now. Anything from the floor?
What is the amount?
The original application was for five hundred thousand. The ARPA committee was recommending two hundred thousand.
Okay, those in favor of postponing action on item number C three.
Would you like, did you go ahead and move on to the next item? The next item was number C four, Custer County School District. To provide seed money for school building trades class. The original application was for eighty-five thousand dollars for seed money to construct a duplex. That would cost approximately two hundred thousand dollars. The application was for eighty-five thousand dollars for seed money for that duplex. We interviewed leaders from the school to include superintendent McFalls and building trades. Director and after consideration, they seem to be dropping the idea of a duplex. That maybe they wouldn't have the capacity to actually fund a duplex or not just fund, but also construct it. But part of a optional plan that they had was to build some small houses on the lots that they have. And our reason for recommending twenty-five thousand dollars. Rather than eighty-five thousand was to provide the seed money for supplies for the building trades class to be able to construct. One of those small homes. Small homes could be built at the school itself rather than being on the lot and then moved to the lot. When it was completed. And so we are trying to encourage the building trades program. We're trying to encourage affordable housing, but we didn't believe that we should fund the entire eighty-five thousand request. But a twenty-five thousand dollar seed money would help the trades program and potentially result in at least one home, small home being built. That could be moved on to their, their lot. That's the justification for our recommendation on C four.
Yeah, I think it's important, Andrew, for you to make, to make sure everybody understands and us as well. The philosophy and what you all used to come up with what was going to be funded. That meets the ARPA guidelines and why this and what all these fit those guidelines and that you, you all as a committee had a philosophy. For long-term effects of.
Yes, we had a fourteen-point criteria list. That included federal ARPA guidelines and criteria, but also Custer County. Community values and interests and one of our interests in Custer County is affordable housing for teachers, first responders, deputies. There were many other. Criteria and we see this as fitting the criteria because of the housing shortages that we have here. That was increased because of COVID. And because of our economy. And so that's why we thought this particular request fit our criteria, but not at the amount that they were initially asking for.
I know we have an outstanding young gentleman representing, I don't know that he's here representing the school, but he's involved with the school. And certainly might ask him a question, but my question I'm getting ready to ask is directed specifically to the committee. Because I'd like to know what the committee knew and didn't know about C four. That fair enough? So if you, if you didn't have that information, I'm fine with that. I just would like to know. I was under the understanding that you did not have a building program. Did you get a different feel as a committee about that?
Yes.
So you believe they do have a building program?
Yes.
Was there any discussion?
Marcy helped me out there.
I think they were kind of starting it up again and they had, I think she said eight kids. Seven or eight kids that are enrolling in that program. But it was, yeah, that we were told that there were eight or nine kids and seven or eight, eight or nine, I can't remember. That were wants to be in that program and get them started.
That's so my.
So I, I just.
Let me know what we can restart from.
And then secondly, was there any discussion about the funds that were on deposit with former building trade program? Now you've got to have that discussion at all, sixty-five or sixty-eight thousand dollars. And did you get any discussion about ownership of the land in Bobcat subdivision? Do you know, does the school still own all of that Bobcat?
They have lots of approximately what eight or so lots.
They said that there were lots available.
You have information on that?
Yeah, we still own most of that subdivision, but there's only like three lots that are actually people to build on. They're the only ones that have utilities. Close by, the rest of them are all behind busbar and stuff and there's not water or power to them. So there's only, I think three of those that actually be feasible to build on.
May I ask Mr. Shaw a question?
You may.
Jake, do you know, did the school sell any of those lots to private?
No, I found that pretty hard. I wanted to keep a hold of it. I think the only ones that are sold are the ones that actually have a house on.
And did the committee have a discussion about the mortuary on?
Yes. And what's the representatives from? And what the representatives from the school presented to us was that they believed they had taps for those three lots. But they were not completely sure. And yet, our thought is that it's probably going to take them two years maybe to even build this. Trying to be home, small home, and by then we hope the moratorium will be done. It'll be done sooner or later.
Yeah, my discussion with the chairman of the board around that water indicated to me that any tap issue had to be. Built upon or connected in one year with a one-year extension possible. I I do not believe they have water and sewer taps on those currently or maybe it had been built on. That's why I believe that I could be wrong. Uh, so I was involved somewhat in that whole formation of building trade program. Never taught the class myself, but certainly I believe there's tremendous value in that. Very disappointed when the school had been away with the building trade program, uh not opposed to helping them restart that program. But this is a pretty big chunk of money. And I think we've had a little bit of discussion uh during yesterday's meeting about what kind of, what's a possibility. For X period of time. Well, we said, for example, well, they'll have to utilize this money within one year and they can't get. Water or sewer, not water, but sewer, but they get water. That's kind of counterproductive because of that moratorium. I just think we need to do some. The diligence here, do you believe the money would actually be spent on?
On the supplies, building supplies for a small home?
Not salaries, not.
No.
Facilities, not.
No.
Benefits, but hard to hear.
Yes. And so it's the committee's recommendation that you approve this uh recommendation.
By a small house, the idea, what we're talking about, square footage. Tiny home.
Something around uh between maybe three and four hundred square foot.
I think it, I I think they were talking to like a a park home or a mini home and I I think they're bigger than four hundred. Yeah, I think.
Four, seven.
Eight times thirty. Or twenty by twenties. Something that the high school uh students in the building trades could work on for a couple of years. And hopefully learn some good skills as well as address the housing issue. Uh, which uh school presented to us that they lost twenty percent of their staff in the last. Uh, in the twenty twenty-one school year, and one of the reasons was housing as an issue.
Yeah, I had a question. I got a question first. Hey Jake.
Yeah.
Uh, school board support building trades?
Yeah, we're a hundred percent behind him. Um, I don't think there's any plans set up on whether they're going to build because there's kind of some.
And and why say?
I don't think it down to wild tiny homes and uh so they're kind of, the money's to seed money to get going on what they're going to do. They're pretty sure they can squeak exemption through round mountains if they were give the ARPA for a cap, but that's not a guarantee. That's a.
Okay, I understand that. So the 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 support would mean future funding you guys would consider to keep the program alive?
Yes, yes, it's.
Okay. And then the other piece is Andrew did mention a um a house built on a foundation not permanent and can be moved later.
Well, um, I think that's kind of the debate I'm going to board and uh really just kind of figure out what did.
Okay.
What to do. There's several options. One of them is is build houses, they're fairly small, not tiny homes, but. Eight hundred thousand square foot homes, they'd be able to buy them from, you know, get along buying them, it'd be affordable, be able to resell those to another teacher. And then that would kind of hopefully give them, give the teachers a. Be thankful to be able to buy a home here later.
Okay, so then my view, this is just me speaking, it's my perception and what it is possible. I think it's a great program to teach people how to do that. I did it in high school and that get a lot of people get home back and building trades there. Uh, so it's a worthwhile project uh to do that because then they graduate and come back and work here and build the house. That's part of the issue. The other one on the moratorium, it isn't going to last forever. Because there's lots and silver cliffs that are here there. It's going to be, it's going to be wasteland for a long time. And that, and I know I've talked to the Dave Schneider at length in the last uh three days. About his plans to increase the septic system problem and fix that and he's got, he was up briefly in Denver. Uh, CPA to me, the CPA team. And their funding hit the project around mountains. So the moratorium, who knows how long that'll last, but it's uh at least uh it's a possibility. And I think uh if if it's uh depending on what they build first and teaching guys how to do some partnering, it could apply to it. Maybe that's a good use of the money.
Well, I think a lot of the plans depend on how big the class is. If you do get eight or nine, it'd probably be bigger, but if it's a two or three person class, it's probably going to be. Takes them to option A.
Okay, sure. Uh, Jake, if you'd stand or not stand littered, I don't mean that, but may I ask you another question, sir?
Yes.
Has the school board, well, two-part question. Do you have a building trades teacher on staff currently?
Currently, yes.
And is the school board's intent to budget for a building trades teacher for twenty-two, twenty-three school year?
Well, it's, we have that as a permanent position. We do as a, even that, uh at least for the next few years, I'm on board.
Would you mind pointing who that teacher is?
Uh, Renee Johnson. She's awesome. She, she left last year. She came back this year. Um. A lot of good, a lot of good projects in the works for sure.
She's a big reason my son went back to school this year.
You would anticipate construction of a home of some sort to start in twenty-two, twenty-three or?
Man, I wish I had an answer for you. I really don't. It's so green and in the stages, I think it all depends on if there's funding and all that. So it's kind of. Kind of, yeah, I think it's kind of contingent on this, but I really don't know. I haven't seen any plans that hurt several things that I. I sure hope so.
Well, thanks for answering those questions. Appreciate it. Okay, well, I I I I've moved and support this and to get the seed money there so that they can make their decision.
Yeah, motion on the floor to approve item number C four.
Any further discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Uh, I I'd like to make a general statement and I mentioned to, uh, alluded to it a little bit on the whole process. I think our vote today does not necessarily mean tomorrow we'll be cutting checks to these entities. We have a lot of work to do. We'll have to have agreements signed contingency. I would hope in this case the school would look at some deed restrictions so the little house won't end up on the open market. Twenty-five thousand in the scheme of things is not a lot of money when you're talking about two hundred, two hundred fifty thousand dollar homes. So I try to keep that perspective, but uh in, from my perspective, without voting to approve any of these today. Does not necessarily mean we're prepared to fund those immediately.
Yeah, it's the same we did on the ones that already, uh, contingent already on by the end of the month, we expect a second installment of the money. Our O's. And they have to wait for that funding before we start dealing with each individual on the physics project and conditions attached to that.
Conditions attached. These are not good projects. Each one's going to have.
Don't get set a condition.
And then I guess my final comment, it's been mentioned twice. I just want to follow up. It's kind of germane to the motion and that is, I, I just asked Kelly, she wasn't sure. I didn't think we voted to approve all of these other applications with the exception of these four. Now, I, maybe I'm wrong about that, but. I know this is the, I specifically asked for time for the research these four.
And I remember that the rest of the list was pretty. So pulling these four out.
Pending getting the final.
Pending, pending the final thing. Okay, you mentioned the forum. Freddie.
Freddie Monster, yeah. When schools excel, communities excel. Now, I think any investment we can make into our school, into our students is beneficial.
And nothing there in the floor. So those in favor of uh supporting item number C four in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. Signified by saying aye.
Aye. Gentlemen, it's ready with the C seventeen, which is also a school application for the Custer County School Childcare Center. Uh, you may have read the application and I think that the introduction is significant. That it says that Custer County is a childcare desert. Uh, statistics are that there are a hundred and sixty-nine children aged five and less in the county. Uh, how many of those actually need childcare is uh left for uh finding out. And yet, there are only two licensed childcare facilities in Custer County that can handle fifteen or less children. So the potential need is a hundred and sixty-nine children. The capacity right now is fifteen or less. The Custer County School has already uh begun uh the work at establishing a childcare facility. They have the building. They are renovating or preparing the building to be suitable for children. And in the meantime, they are uh renting or leasing uh a church to be used for this project. Their application was for two hundred and eight thousand dollars. The committee is recommending one hundred thousand of that. Why a hundred thousand out of the two hundred and eight? We couldn't necessarily give you an accounting of that other than it showed, I think, significant support. And our interest in this project because of the need that single moms and working moms have for childcare.
And that's.
And that, thank you.
Requested amount was what Andrew mentioned?
Two hundred and eight thousand five hundred and twenty-nine.
Oh, eight or two.
Two oh eight.
Our says two eighty.
The, I think that the um.
I think.
Whole project is two hundred and eighty, but they are requesting two hundred and five.
And and who's funding the other?
They're coming, they're coming up with it somehow.
Twenty-five to kids council, twenty-five, the council revenue, E S S.
There, the spreadsheet they had that accompanied this application is long and I must admit, I don't understand it all.
Yeah, I see the, I see where they had the other pieces, but they didn't add up. But it looks like there's already investment in it.
They've done investment in it already. They are moving forward. This is not seed money. This is uh. A continued encouragement while they get established. And I think that the planning uh looks like they anticipate being established and it being able to support itself within two years.
Okay, Stacy.
There you are.
Um, what can I clarify or answer? Yes, that's very detailed and I appreciate that thing from the school's business manager. She's forward thinking as far as annual costs. And just to kind of catch the group, uh, the school did get funds that um Mr. Flower read as far as grants. A motto building was already purchased. It is onsite. It's on the outside of the school. It has three classrooms, an infant age room, a toddler age room. And preschool age room. Um, power has been hooked up. They are literally waiting on the plumber to come and connect. Um, water and plumbing and all of that. Uh, the toddler center is already open at the Church of Christ. Built um church in Silver Cliff. They can house up to ten children. I think there's three in there right now. So if you know of anyone that has children between the ages of one to three, I encourage you to have them reach out to the school. Um, the idea is, like you said, it's not seed money, but that we're moving forward with this. It's going to take some time to build capacity and get those numbers maxed out in each of those classrooms. But one of the keys is to make sure that we have staff in each of those classrooms that we can offer all three age groups to the community. Uh, so we're just trying to get us uh assistant dollars to help specifically for some of the work uh that people work in those classrooms. One of the long-term goals with the school is to also use this as. A lab. So we are doing concurrent enrollment with uh these public community college and Fremont for EC classes. So that juniors and seniors could do their class, their EC one-on-one class and EC one-on-three classes virtually at the school. And then go work and earn hours of time in the childcare center. So then we can maybe get some, some potential teachers to come back here and work in our child, the household. Um, we are a desert. We have fifteen slots, like I said, uh, two, four of those can be under the age of two. So Robin can take care of two children under the age of two. Willie can take care of two children under the age of two. And as of right now, that is it. Uh, so our goal, because there's really a big need between zero to three, um, as far as childcare slots. So the school's really stepped up and partner um with, and a big thing is the teacher recruiting um and retention. So often childcare for their staff and as well.
What's your capacity then for the zero number three in this new classroom?
So the new classroom with the infants, um, it would probably be anywhere from around eight infants. Um, which again is double what we already have. Um, the toddler age would be uh probably around ten. Which is what they're currently licensed for right now. Preschool, again, it's just going to depend on um. Once the rooms are completely outfitted, what the actual space for uh for the children to be in there licensing is very stringent on um. Per space per child, but for preschool age, we're hoping anywhere from twelve to fifteen. I think this will also really help. I know one of the challenges with preschool age right now in our preschool class at the school currently is the. Um, half-day class. Um, parents need full daycare. So if their kid only goes to the three-year-old class in the morning, where's their preschool age child go in the afternoon? So I anticipate that that classroom will be pretty full pretty quickly. Um, so again, infants probably around eight to ten. Toddlers, um, around eight to ten and then preschool twelve to fifteen, but it'll just ultimately come down to the actual space available in the classrooms once they're completely outfitted.
Thank you for being here. Appreciate it. I think you probably know where I stand on this whole project. At the beginning, when you started speaking this morning, I apologize. I was listening slower than you were talking. So I just some clarification. So who's building at the school?
The new building?
Yes, ma'am.
The school does and it is getting one hundred percent paid for.
Okay.
There's no mortgage or rent for that building.
Okay, so Custer County Kids Council has no part of that ownership?
No.
The Church of Christ effort that's going on, that is also the school's or is that Kids Council?
They're in a lease, the school had a lease agreement with the Church of Christ. It was a one-year lease agreement. Um, that goes through the end of August this year. And again, the goal is to hopefully um have that modular building ready to go. By the time school starts in twenty-two, twenty-three. Um, but I think if there was more time needed. Um, that the school as well as the church could go into that amount of degree. But it's just a lease.
But the long-term plan is to take that activity back to the school in that modular. What are you guys calling that building? Is that? Childcare center?
Yes, it's the Custer County School.
Okay, so it can be preschool, toddler?
Basically, they want to be able to take care of children through the ages of newborn, I should say, six weeks to um right before they are concurred. So five slash six depending on the age of the child. Um, but because of licensing rules, infants have to be in their own space compared to for a childcare center. Family homes is different. For a childcare center, infants have to be in their own space.
And thank you. I appreciate that. And then question to the committee. I looked at this application. It's fairly extensive. Do you think some of these dollars will be for salaries for staffing?
I think that was a question that we had, and it was a concern we had.
Yeah. And I'll just put it out there. I'll support this, but I one of the red flags for this arc of money for me is salaries. Those are not self-sustaining. That is the school's responsibility to pay for salaries. I don't mind this money going for support of the program outside of, outside of salary. That's where I shake out.
The committee concurs with you on that. We brought that up a number of times. If this money does go for salaries, the reason that we would still make this recommendation is because they have a plan for it becoming self-sustaining within a couple of years.
And again, we as a commissioner would have draft contingencies on this as well. I would condition, condition. I keep saying contingencies, and I think condition is a much better word. So I would move that we fund C seventeen for the childcare center at the school.
In the amount of, yeah.
One hundred.
One hundred thousand.
Yeah, motion on the floor to approve item number C seventeen in the amount of one hundred thousand. Any more discussion? You think from the floor? Those in favor of supporting item number C seventeen in the amount of one hundred thousand, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. The file.
And for you. Thanks, Jay. Thanks. Good job.
Thank you. The next item, C twenty, is from the Custer County Extension uh Agent Office. And I know that there's been, there's a transition going on right now. It's my understanding in regard to personnel, and yet I think our recommendation would not be affected by that. Uh, they presented to us a list of projects with a, uh, quite a number of projects totaling sixty thousand dollars. And their requested amount was um rounded off at forty-seven thousand dollars. Our recommendation is ten thousand dollars. Uh, if you look at the list of projects that they are working on for that sixty thousand and the requested amount of forty-seven thousand, rounded off, one of the projects is funding camp for kids. And it's, the committees thought that this ten thousand dollar recommendation would go to support four or five children per year to go to the four-H youth leadership camp for two years. Uh, it seems that this camp has been effective in helping children uh develop as leaders at the level that they are. These are the future county commissioners. Yes. And so ten thousand dollars for for two years of having eight to ten children go to camp. That's what we are recommending this ten thousand dollars be used for.
As a clarification, certified, uh, this applicant also spoke to funding some of the shooting sport program.
Yeah, and we, we aren't necessarily uh recommending, I'm not opposed to that at all, okay? But the reason we came up with ten thousand, because we're having the budget too. We don't have enough money to support everybody's. We're budgeting. We were interested in supporting the kids camp. And we thought funds for shooting sports might be able to come from somewhere else.
So are you recommending or are you thinking that we should put a condition on there that it's only used for camps or grant the application?
And I think our recommendation would be that it be primarily used for camps. Um, how you limit that? Again, that's you. You've probably read the application, and there was a lot, uh, there were many projects in it.
Yeah, I would think we would need to speak with them personally when we operate it funded to find out just exactly how many kids could do that. It's gonna be spread.
Five thousand dollars we could, would pay for, almost completely pay for five kids going to camp in one year. So we're, I mean, we're interested in two years.
And that.
Because one of my criteria was helping kids.
Right.
Um, and encouraging kids in their personal growths.
And my understanding is for this specific situation here that those kids going to those camps also have to contribute. This is not a hundred percent payment for those camps. They have to contribute fifty percent of the expense.
Well, in the past, yeah, the extension office has paid for half, and the kids paid for half, and this is more making it a hundred percent.
It's some.
Or they just, you know, how would they use it and budget it all out? Not sure. But we, our recommendation's ten thousand out of the forty-seven that they asked for. And camps was something that motivated us that direction.
Not to say that some of the other projects were not.
Not at all.
Projects.
I would do pretty.
I'll say it then.
Ten thousand.
Yeah, I'll say it for ten thousand.
Yeah, motion on the floor to support item number C twenty in the amount of ten thousand dollars. Any further discussion? Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 And if you appoint me as sheriff, I will enroll the inmates as seminary students and require them to become army chaplains.
Nice transition there.
So are we continuing as commissioners to hold funding any of these until we get the second payment?
Yes.
Yes.
Any other questions, Mary?
I have, I have, uh, I mean, I understand that that's your understanding, but we have in the A category, only adds up to, well, we paid ten thousand like probably in the last couple of weeks. There's only sixty-seven thousand three hundred and fifty-eight dollars and then uh twelve hundred and eighty-two dollars in the A category, which is less than ten percent of the funds. And it seems to me that it might be more beneficial to go ahead and get some of these out and paid for. That probably won't change. Even if you don't get the money, it's probably the bigger um applications that would probably be affected. And now we're holding back two hundred thousand. Uh, is there any way that we can get some of these paid? I mean, one guy is waiting to get his C D L license, so he can get back to work after losing work for COVID. Um, it just seems like we can one, one percent of the money could be spent and get rid of, I think, um, one thirteen. Thirteen out of thirty-one. And we spend less than one, one percent of the money.
What did you say your goal was there for the remaining in A and B?
Uh, yeah, it would be, uh, I don't know if we paid out the one um for um public health, but even with the public health, it would be less than uh eighty thousand dollars.
Less than ten that we've already listed.
Yeah.
So seven.
Yeah.
Well, we had that discussion the other day, and we said we were gonna let it go at the end of the month, but the specifics of.
Could we invite the chair back up?
And chair back up?
Yeah, Andrew.
Oh, welcome, sir.
Thank you. Are you back?
My thought is that's up to your discretion.
Almost sounds like a politician.
So.
Man, sir.
Yes.
Um, I think you bring up about a point. It goes in the face, uh, or in the opposition to the motion that we passed last week. Doesn't mean that we couldn't entertain a motion to reconsider that. Um, we, we had that discussion.
My thought is that it's time that you guys see some details. And if you look at the A categories and the B categories, did I give one of you two?
Well, this is stapled.
Let's see.
I got one.
You got one.
Well, I missed you one here.
One.
Are you just giving me?
And uh, I thought I had three.
It's just a regular spreadsheet, my class spreadsheet.
Yeah, yes. Very good. It's the same. That's it. So if you look there in the A category, the A category, there were household applications. Come, our recommendations comes in a total of five thousand three hundred and five. The B category.
But then there's one twelve eighty-one left.
Because we explained.
You already paid this first.
Correct. Thank you.
How much left?
Twelve hundred and eighty-one.
Twelve hundred and eighty.
Eighty.
Maybe what, if you look at the B category, these were the less than ten thousand dollar requests. And you can see there what they requested in the requested amount column. You can see the amount recommended along with those which we are recommending that we not fund in the far right column.
You can take B eleven out.
And we've already funded B eleven.
So it's sixty-seven thousand three hundred.
Yeah, so I think you could easily fund all the P category that has been recommended at seventy-seven for sixty-seven thousand dollars at this time. And then it's the C category, which are the larger chunks. And you can look on the bottom of this page and the follow-on page and see that that totals seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand.
And that requires a second tranche.
That'll take a second tranche. So I think what Marcy maybe is encouraging is that you look at going ahead and funding the B category.
I, I, I am, and I think uh the treasurer uh right, might be glad to have that too, to get rid of, uh, you know, some checks ahead of time too, that are less than just one percent. I have all, I have all the names and addresses and contact numbers too.
Can you compare?
Yeah, I mean, it's just a suggestion. I, I, especially the, the one, the A for the twelve eighty-two. I, I just don't think we should make it. But we've got somebody out there that's trying to recover from the COVID and um restarting a new job.
I, this, my, my thought is real quick. I, I thought we didn't have a problem, and I think the reason we didn't was because we needed to have time to set up a process and figure out how we're gonna put conditions on it or not, but we'd have to start that early and be ready to go start that. And so maybe something certainly concerned might be.
And chair, I would move we reconsider the items that is concerning the funding that we passed on Friday concerning funding the recommendation that the pending funding, receiving. And I did vote on the very side, so.
I'll say.
I did.
I have a motion on the floor to reconsider. You did not say category A and B.
No, no, no.
Uh, reconsider the motion uh pending further funding.
Fund projects pending.
Need more discussion on that?
Well, I think the correct enough process here, that means really this motion passes, that that motion comes back to this group for further discussion. And then uh we would have to entertain another motion to
Fund the ten, two P's.
To replace that. If we reconsider it, it really, it doesn't do away with that motion necessarily, but it does open up for further discussion and a vote. But we, we may amend it or.
Okay, so I have a motion on the floor to reconsider. Uh, any other discussion here? You think from the floor?
This implied motion, so the other comments not applicable. Okay.
Those in favor of reconsidering the motion last week or uh dependent upon further funding? Signify by saying aye.
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 So for discussion then, I, I concur with Marcy's sentiment. I'm assuming.
I think it's a good plan.
Have.
It gets the de, gets the details out of the way.
And so just run forward in that one thousand two hundred and eighty-two and sixty-seven thousand three hundred and fifty-eight. That's correct.
I'm sorry, what?
Uh, the twelve eighty-two on the As is remit yet to be funded. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
And sixty-seven through fifty-eight on the Bs.
Yes.
Check.
Correct.
So we're roughly sixty-eight thousand five hundred. And from those, and those, your recommendations stand on those two regards.
Yes.
So Tom, what, to get, and what are we reconsidering? It's a motion funded, so we're gonna modify that motion. Current clue to be restated that we will fully fund the B today.
Exactly.
And uh. The rest pending.
In my opinion.
C's pending uh funding.
In my opinion, an amendment would be a priority to that.
That's the motion. Why would we amend the motion to uh fund the A, to the funding A and B projects? That's now will be.
So A one through A seven excluding A two.
Right, and then B, all B's excluding B eleven. And immediately announce that uh balance the rest of the C projects upon receipt of.
And your motion to amend?
Uh, motion to amend uh the previous motion to include wording stating that we will fund uh A one through A seven without A two and the B category, uh, B one through B twenty-three excluding B eleven. to be funded with this per trun of money for immediately.
It's actually only B four, I mean, it's only.
Yeah.
Safe.
Which you want to go to address in discussion.
So.
So if I made an amendment, Chairman, uh, those numbers to is handed included in this amendment and Chairman repeated during, restating of the amendment, were, was an inclusive list. It's not technically accurate because some of those numbers were recommended to be on, so it's really a suggestion to approve those in those categories that have been recommended for funding them there.
Yeah.
But, yeah, because the way that then stated, we have to fund all of them, if they were denied.
Right, I guess the ones that were sold there.
For the approval.
And the Cs funded upon receipt of.
Yeah, the original motion would stand because cause there are some D nines in there, that's.
You know, I've given Dorothy a copy of this now, I found my extra copy, I'm thinking she probably needs it.
And names and averages.
Yes, I got that, yeah. I got, I got my spreadsheet so that it can be, it can be used for many different ways.
Yes. Okay, any further discussion? Any discussion from the floor on that?
It, it would be good to, to, um, handle those that have declined in one way or another, maybe with a letter from Dorothy.
It's saying that last.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we hadn't, we hadn't presented to her yet.
Now you need to follow up.
That's why I just.
I have the spreadsheet for those two.
She has a letter. She has a letter.
That letter will come to the commission.
All right, so we need to vote on that.
Those in favor of the amendment to the previous motion to add verbiage to fund, uh, the items in the A category recommended for approval and the B category recommended for approval. Signified by saying aye.
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 Because it's not identified on here, are we to assume that your recommendations were for I don't think it's been proven, there are partials in here, are you aware of?
If you live in this category compared to this category, then you see the partial.
I'll, I'll get her, I'll get her exactly what she was telling us.
It's gonna be a half.
Okay. I move to approve the motion for funding as the ARCA funds as amended here today.
Vote on that.
That's my number.
Yeah.
All right, uh, so now we have amended motion on the floor uh, to approve the ARCA funding as amended here today. Any discussion on that? Any things on the floor? Here you go. Uh, those in favor of approving the amended motion signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. I heard three A. The next item up is our consideration of the appointment of replacement for Sheriff Firely. It is while we are locating everything, why don't we take a short recess? Go ahead.
Okay, we're going to read the meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. Next time when we have up on there again, there will be a consideration of the appointment replacement for Sheriff Byerly. I would state that I know a lot of people here for that. And I would ask that we be respectful in our comments. I would ask that we keep our comments somewhat brief as well, so that we're not here for a very long time. And we hold our applause to the end, as they say at some of the venues, rather than clapping in booths. So that would be part of showing the decorum and the respect. And so I think everyone here knows that Sheriff Byerly did turn in his letter of resignation yesterday. That will be effective on May 20th, 2022. He has taken another job that will not wait for him to finish his term.
Can you speak up please?
Sheriff Byerly has tendered his letter of resignation. That will be effective on May 20th, 2022. And for that, we are here to consider a replacement to take that position until the newly elected sheriff will take possession of that office. I believe in January 15th, I believe, somewhere in there. I don't know if I have that date correct or not, but it will take place in January. So.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I would move that we appoint Brandon Shaw as the replacement sheriff per Sheriff Byerly's recommendation to take effect May 20th at 12:01 PM.
I would second that, so we can go into discussion here. So we do have a motion on the floor to accept the recommendation from Sheriff Byerly to appoint Brandon Shaw as the replacement sheriff pending the installation of the elected sheriff in January. That would be January 10th. Now I will open the floor up for discussion.
The floor?
Or the, for the discussion among the board. Anyone here?
Go ahead. Go ahead, I want to be last. You're always, or I'm always, I can do my hands.
Good for her.
Yeah, I appreciate Sheriff Byerly's, not only his letter of resignation and its content, but also his recommendation. I assume my fellow commissioners reached out for some legal counsel pertaining to this, wanting to show that if and when it becomes appropriate, but I think it's pretty straightforward. I can say that I truly believe that Sheriff Byerly made his recommendation based on what he believes is best for his county. Think politics entered into that, that's my perception. The whole political realm is mired here today, really, but I don't think that was driving force in his recommendation to this board. I'll take him at his word, I believe, what he said yesterday.
Thank you. Yes, I will defer at this time. If you'd like to speak.
Yeah. Yeah, I appreciate that, Tom, thanks. And as everybody knows, the letter was quite a, it wasn't a shock shock, but it was a shock.
No matter being.
Being, no, the resignation. It was unfortunate that it happened in an election year. And it's unfortunate that there's some confusion on how we would proceed. And the research I did last night since the day that the, we got this word, I was concerned about a couple of things. One is, we're in an election. We've got Brandon and we've got Rich Smith here that are competing with each other. And, and politics don't play into it. You should look at it as what's best for the county citizens to keep them safe. And especially given the fire dangers that's coming up, there could be some earthquakes and all that. I don't doubt for a second that both of them are qualified to do the job. But I would like to see, in a perfect world, we have an undersheriff. And in a perfect world, that's where it would go. I've learned something during the research. I've learned that in the future, we're going to make darn sure that the undersheriff is a resident of the county. That's my, because it would have been a lot simpler, because in fact, when a sheriff can't do the job, or is removed, or resigns, then the undersheriff is there to stand in. And can be appointed to be the sheriff if we so decide, or we could go with anybody else. Would make it a lot easier, because it, the legal advice we got from our attorney stated that, you know, it had to be a resident of the county, but it was a minimum time of one year for residents or people that are residents requirement. However, in other documents, so I got ahold of, tried to get ahold of the sheriff's, Colorado Sheriff's Association and the Secretary of State. So there is a citation that Clint missed of the revised statute 30-10-501.5. It came into effect in 2016. I'll repeat that, Colorado revised statute 30-10-501.5. I'm going to read it, so there's no confusion. No person shall be eligible for nomination, election, or appointment to the Office of Sheriff unless such person is one or a citizen of the United States, is a citizen of the state of Colorado, and is a resident of the county to which the person is to be appointed or elected. That's number one. Secondly, to possess a high school diploma or its equivalent or a college degree. And C, has a complete set of fingerprints taken by the qualified law enforcement agency. The statute says resident, it doesn't say minimum one year. So that is, I, you know, that doesn't say anything about one year. Then we can argue about other things. The requirement to be a resident is real. Robert Hill is living with his brother and is not a resident of the county. He was intended to be a resident, he never, probably never finished that. And so that's why I say, one thing I've learned, it would be nice to not have beaten built it as if it was already a resident. There are other qualified people in the sheriff's department, Brandon Shaw is one. Miles, I don't remember Miles's last name, but he's not eligible for the same reasons he's not a resident of the state, or the county, either one. So, and, and that prompted me to call Andrew Zeller up last night as well to find out, because he was building an apartment in town here to be a rental property. And I asked him if it was available. He said no, because he's got three more months to go before he finishes. And that led to a further discussion on apartments that are available in the county. Because if this statute applies and it's real, then, then it's important for Robert Hill to agree that he can become a resident of the county now, and, and the apartment available now. To me, if that's the case, and we'll get into that in just a second, then that keeps the fairness in the election process open. So without getting in the, in the middle of who's more qualified or not, or who's endorsing what, or what's implied, et cetera. So went further with Andrew, and then Andrew couldn't think anything, but he did come up with a solution that I think's viable. There are apartments of, excuse me, available that are within the ability for Robert Hill to pay. They're very reasonable, and that had me get into a discussion with Robert Hill. Robert Hill, I had spent about three calls with him last night to find out if he's willing to stay. And he was always willing to stay, Shan, I've talked to Shannon as well. He was always willing to stay and be the undersheriff for whoever either we appoint or until the election is complete on, and a new sheriff takes office in January 30th. So that was a requirement for rental, and I mentioned that back to Andrew, and Andrew said, it's a, he's got the apartments available with kitchen facilities, et cetera, up at his seminary. That's where it is. So I went back to Robert, and Robert said he would be willing to do that if they required, not at that point, I kind of called him back and said, because our attorney said it's a year requirement, then that would eliminate. So now the discussion, in my view, is, and I don't know how to validate this, other than we just go look up 30-10-501.5 and have everybody convinced that, and interpreted that way, maybe Clint could take a look at it. He's not here to discuss that. And so maybe the discussion then would evolve into, do we wait another day to verify that? Or do we just take this on face value on what was cited in this Colorado revised statute? That was effective in 2016. So that is what I was. From the sheriff has given us, Sheriff is a lot of weight also. So that's where I wanted to throw that out for discussion on what other steps would be required, or would we get considered? And so that we do come up on the right solution with the right discussion with the input from the county, the people. So you've got all the data that I had, Tom and Kevin had, I think, unless Kevin's got something else.
No, I, no, I received this 30-10-501.5 this morning. Thank you for sending that out. And that does raise questions as to whether, on the residency requirements as far as timing, that I don't know an answer to.
Can I provide that answer?
Yes, thank you for that.
According to Colorado Constitution, Article 14, Section 10, an elector only eligible to county offices title, no person shall be eligible to any county office unless he shall be a qualified elector, nor unless he shall have resided in the county one year prior preceding his term.
That applies in conflict need with the Colorado revised statute, same thing as the Constitution on sheriffs specifically, because I think they flag sheriffs out as a different category for reason.
I would agree with you as well. The timing of this thing stinks, I think everybody in this room can agree with that. Because it does, whether intended or not, does make it a difficult decision. That being said, I haven't made up my mind on either one of them yet. I have met with you for lunch, I'm planning on going to your get together here Friday. I think it's, that's Friday or not. Anyhow, I have not made up my mind. Any decision, if we make that decision today, will be based on that, I have not made up my mind. My decision will be on what I think is best for this county, for that department moving forward for the cohesion. To make sure that we have a viable sheriff's office now in the time of the new elected sheriff will take office. And that any decision we make here today, I know will be viewed as going one way or another. You don't get away from that. Because of, of the office, because of the timing, the election coming up. And in the perfect world, it would have taken place in January. Left, that is not a possibility at this time. It would have been great if it could have been after the, at least the primary, because both candidates are Republican party. And I realize that, so that would have been decided, that would have made this decision a lot easier. But that being said, there's, I want that on record that that is what I'm looking at. Trying to move forward with the best possible solution to this. And I know both of you got a winner and qualified for that job. And I will be quiet now.
With permission, sir, I'd like to read the legal opinion that we've been provided to the county. I'm just glad to have it, but I think it's just, that's a fair to read it out loud. Ms. Clint Smith, County Attorney. It is my legal opinion that undersheriff Hill cannot be appointed to fulfill the remainder of Sheriff Byerly's term because he is not a qualified elector in Custer County, nor is he a resident of this county. He has the implied statutory authority pursuant to 30-10-105 to step in and run the office on an emergency basis for a short period of time in the event of an emergency, an emergency situation such as a sudden death or incapacity of the sheriff. But when there is a resignation that's noticed that does not take effect for nearly three weeks, there is ample time for the Board of County Commissioners to find and appointee who does meet constitutional requirements for any elected official. No emergency exists with respect to Sheriff Byerly's resignation, and therefore the undersheriff is ineligible to be considered for appointment to become the full-time sheriff for the remainder of Sheriff Byerly's term. Sheriff Byerly's recommendation is just that, a recommendation only based on the knowledge of the requirements of the office and the familiarity of Sergeant Shaw as to how things work in the office. There is a learning curve which is certainly an important consideration. However, you are under no obligation to accept his recommendation. For those who would argue that such an appointment would give Sergeant Shaw an unfair advantage in the upcoming general election, all I can say is that if anybody knows of a third party who is not seeking the office and who would be qualified to serve as sheriff until January of 2023, and who satisfies the constitutional requirements regarding being a qualified elector and resident of Custer County, they should suggest a name for your consideration. Appointing the other candidate to the office would do nothing to help, I feel, Clint Smith.
Okay, at this time, I would open the floor. Again, I would ask that we keep our comments brief. If we're simply restating over and over the same thing, I might ask that stop as well. But, and then keep our side comments to ourselves. And as you do speak, please state your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Dawn Ramso, I have a question.
Say it again, so she can catch it right now.
Dawn Ramso.
Well, you got it.
My question is, we, when is our primary election, which is the 23rd, 28th next month? And then my comment is, could we possibly change our focus to maybe fill that gap from now until, or from May 20th until the primary election, when people actually get a chance to vote? So I'm just going to throw some stuff out there, you guys take it wherever you want. We had a sheriff for, I'm not sure how long he was a sheriff, Fred Joe was a sheriff for a long time. He still lives in our community, he still resides here. Wouldn't it be worth at least reaching out and asking him if that would be something I would be interested in, or is that not something feasible?
Oh, I'll get you in a little second, I'll be the first one. I actually spoke to Fred Joe last night. I did not specifically ask him that, but he did not offer that up either. So I could not speak to what his mindset on that. I did speak with him.
I did talk to Fred Joe, and I asked him specifically, would you do that, because it was that important? And he hesitated for a tenth of a second, said no. He's retired and didn't feel like he would. A lot of things have changed since he left office, and the county's grown, it's different. And he just didn't feel like it were the right thing to do. So, yes, he was very serious about it.
Then I have one more question. If, how have we had an undersheriff for the last two or two and a half years that hasn't been an actual person of the county? He wasn't, because that doesn't make sense to me, I mean, it's good enough to be undersheriff, but not.
Right.
Isn't that, yeah.
We have an answer to that question, so.
I will, I will just question, state on that's not required, I'm sure, to live in the county.
Secondary to that, something we've been dealing with, something that was in the art applications earlier in the day is the total lack of housing that we have in Custer County. At the present time, the sheriff's office has six deputies to park at County Shop and what more, because they live out of county. They cannot find housing in Custer County, and that presents, right now, that is presenting a problem to us here. It presents a problem because those deputies are not members of this county. And, uh, but for this particular case, that is how many deputies that that live out of county because they cannot find housing in Custer County.
Yeah, and of course that did include undersheriff. And he did try to get uh residency, but in this case it has to be a resident. And that's why I went to search desk to find out if that was case in the case if he could be a resident now and that's to start invading could be. But that's for us to decide here later.
Jack Canterbury. Kelly, how long after Shannon actually vacates his office, do we have to have a replacement before the governor picks one?
Um, it doesn't say how long and it's not. The governor's, it's the duty of the board of commissioners. The governor only appoints in case of a commissioner resigning early.
Okay, so there isn't a time limit of when we have to do this, so the undersheriff could act. To run the office until we file. Correct? Okay. All of you county commissioners. Were elected as members of the Republican Party. I would assume that you would want to follow the rules of the Republican Party since you are Republicans. And the Colorado Republican bylaws, Article fourteen, section C. When a vacancy occurs in any other county office, the county vacancy committee. Shall make recommendations promptly to the board of county commissioners concerning an appointment to fill such vacancy. That's what and our county bylaws say the same thing. I, as chairman of our county Republican Party. I would like to ask the commissioners to give me time to convene a meeting. Of our vacancy committee so that we can make recommendations to the county commissioners. Our bylaws do not say that the elected official vacating the office makes the recommendations. It says that the county vacancy committee, which in Custer County is the entire central committee. Make the recommendations to the board of county commissioners. I would like to have time to be able to do that. I've I've said that as the chairman of the Custer County Republican Party, now I'm going to say something as a private citizen. I believe that since this is an election year. It is completely inappropriate and in my feeling unethical. For Mr. Byerly to suggest that one of the candidates fill his position. Because it would create influence in the election. I feel that it is completely inappropriate and unethical. For the board of county commissioners to appoint either of the candidates to fill that position for the same reason. And I feel that it would be completely inappropriate and unethical for either of the candidates to accept it. If the commissioners attempted to appoint them because. The Republican Party is founded on fairness and we are in a situation in our United States right now. Where election integrity is one of the. Biggest things that is facing our country, our nation right now. And if we appoint a candidate to fill this position. We've got election integrity problems right here at the county level. And we can't solve any of the other problems if we can't take care of our county. It would be, it would be an election integrity nightmare for either one of the candidates. To accept the position if it was offered to him and it would be completely inappropriate. In my opinion, for the county commissioners to appoint either one of the candidates. Let's keep this a fair playing field as much as we can. And find a way not to appoint one of the candidates to do it. Thank you.
Okay, after each person speaks, we're not doing the applause, we're not doing the boos and the cat calls. Is that clear?
Sure.
No, we had to, we had the applause and we're not gonna do that. Is that clear? I want to hear an answer.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you. Can I ask why? Because we're exercising a little respect and decorum and we have people from both sides in here and we're not gonna degrade ourselves for that level.
Yeah, don't do it. Just let's.
Okay. Sir.
My name is John Austin. I don't really have anything to say. I've got two hip replacements and that wood is just killing me. But, uh, no, I, um, I want to be careful what I say. We're in the community. I don't want to get run off yet and, uh. I've been here for forty two years in Colorado. I've lived most of that time in Steeblin Springs and Conifer and so. Um, I'm a big fan of Dean and the Mountains. We're, uh, we're in Colorado Springs right now. Melissa, my wife, uh, just retired from the fire department. And, uh, you know, I have a high allergy to city living, so I'm really excited about getting back up here, but we're involved in a couple nonprofits and. One of them is helping addicts and alcoholics find recovery. I'm a thirty year, um. Addict and, um. What we do is work with these people that come from, um. From treatment centers and detox and probation and. And the things that we we try to instill on them are spiritual principles and those principles are. Um, honesty, respect, dignity, um, integrity, love, light, joy, compassion, kindness. And, um, you know, I have to live within the boundaries of those spiritual principles, not just to stay sober, but to have recovery. You know, to be able to have freedom within myself and those principles come from God and I'm a very big fan of that. Um, we both were served on an international committee and another fellowship that had fifty people from all over the world. Um, on that committee, um, developing programs to. Reach out to addicts internationally and let them know, um, there's a solution. Um, chairing that committee was similar to, um, herding cats. Um, you know, people have certain ideas and opinions and, um, you know, there's challenges and conflicts and, you know, politicking. Uh, you know, all that that's going on and we had to be very careful about what we said, what we did. Because it could affect thousands of people. We could kill people with, um, decisions that we made. And so we had to constantly reflect back into those principles in order to be able to ensure. That what our motives were, what we were doing was right, that we weren't here to try to influence one thing or another and sometimes. That meant that people that we were friends with, um, outside of that, um, didn't get what they wanted from us because we had to do what was the best thing for the collective. And, um, and I, and I think we did that very well and we're really happy that, um, that it came to be. I. I really think that, um, one of the things that sold us for coming here was the, um, like mindedness that we found. And when talking to people and working with people, even my house anywhere, that's that's not it. It's the community that we bought into and that's why we're here, you know, we we want to be. A part of what's going on here, um, at some point and, um, you know, I think the easy thing when you talk about, you know, these principles about fairness and. Honesty, integrity, like I would ask, would both candidates abstain from that position? Um, in the hopes that that would take away some of the negativity that could possibly arise. Uh, and conflicts that could arise for something like that. Again, we're a very small community. We're we're happy to be a small part of that. But we want to make sure that, um, you know, our motives are right and what we're doing, we hope that maybe that might be some remedy to the problem. Thank you.
So a couple of questions.
Who's speaking?
If you talk, if you ask.
Introduce yourself, please.
Uh, Brandon Shaw, one of the candidates. Have you asked my help?
Yes. Yes.
And so did I. Yeah.
So how would, how would it be to ignore the residence or? Young sheriff? How difficult would it be for to ignore the residency requirements for the young sheriff?
I actually asked the same question and I have a call into the secretary of state elections division. Cause I did find out that they, especially on small counties, have problems. Uh, that way they can grant waivers and exemptions, exceptions for certain things. Uh, this is kind of unique because he's been the underst- I'm not talking about from a resident of Robert Hill. He's been working here for a couple of years, knows the county, so it's not the reason for the residency requirement in the first place is to make sure you're. Representing citizens, so you gotta know this reason, you gotta know the county. So that seems to be a logical thing and the fact that he can become a resident is there. The, uh, also, there is no left, there is no timeframe specified for when we have to nominate somebody. That's bad. Other counties have gone many days. Matter of fact, in one county was getting, uh, because of the election year, a big sweat because, uh, they've gone thirty, forty days with, uh, with no appointment. So, but we don't want to do that as responsible commissioners because of what we've said before. You want us, uh. Uh, a leader that you can get you through the, the, uh, hard times, right? The things that come up. So my view on Robert Hill on that is he's got the experience, uh, because he's been here. So that's why it's, uh, something I want to hear more of what you all have to say, but that's why we need to understand what's out there and what can be done.
Might say to that, I believe after. The office is vacant, so after the twenties, we have five days.
Yeah.
To fill that office. Uh, the reason for this beforehand was so that we would have someone in there that can be. Uh, familiar with it beforehand.
That's, that's true. If you point, that's true, but yeah, if the undersheriff, I can't remember how that was. Anyway, that's.
We used to go somewhere else. I might have a question back for, I guess that was my question back for you, uh, in regards to you asking. About, uh, my comment or undersheriff Hill and. If, I don't know that it would be fair to. Ask you a further question on that today as to your opinion on that, so. If you would like to be forward coming with that, I would ask that question. Could that might be beneficial for this whole discussion? Okay. Go ahead. Uh, so that would be my question to you. Could you, you address both of those gentlemen who do fit the. One fits the qualifications, uh, one. Has residency requirement. So my question is your thoughts on those gentlemen? Or, uh, because I know that you are the one that has been recommended by Sheriff Byerly.
The reality is the office is more important than selection. So no matter what, the office has to continue on. That's the only discussion we're having right now is who's gonna take it from there to January. So if Mike Alvin or you can waive your requirement for residence, the undersheriff. You want both leaders, um, who help the office. Thank you. I appreciate that.
I believe actually in one of several of these answers is provided to. The, uh, fairly simple solution, actually. And I, from reading the statutes, I think you're reading that two thousand six one statute is the most appropriate. I'm not talking about. An elector, an appointee or, and they don't necessarily have to meet the criteria. And the one year residency criteria would be a really standout oddity. For example, our judge was asked to be a resident and was literally.
Still isn't a resident.
Well, even even regarding the room they allegedly rented was. Was, there was no one year requirement. That would be a very standout oddity feature, but. I'm sorry, Don, I didn't introduce myself. I know you know. I'm sorry. But the solution actually seems rather obvious at this point. The undersheriff is by all normal procedures, the normal one to step in that position in an emergency, right? Short time period, but Jack mentioned the primary is actually really. The answer to our election in this, in this case, which is January twenty eighth.
July.
July twenty eighth. Wrong. So you're talking about.
Yeah.
You're talking about just short of the first of June to the end of June is the only contended period. There is a, you're not the only person that's heard about the potential of a waiver. Why can't the undersheriff be appointed to that position in an existing circumstance for a short period of time? And then you permanently appoint someone for the remainder of the election cycle after the primary. What's wrong with that? That, that, they are, whoever makes it through the primary at that point is the de facto sheriff making it through our election process. So if nothing else, you have simply shortened the time of the new sheriff taking over the, the new office. And you pretty much met all the requirements at that point by having the undersheriff do his job, which is to stand in for the sheriff in his absence. On a contingency basis and appointed the most appropriate person we can as soon as you possibly can, which is after the primary.
I'm Linda Pollock and many of you have already said what I'm gonna say, but I'm gonna say it anyway. Uh, the VOCC has a dilemma on its hands, we really do, whether or not you immediately need to fill this position. Um, the sheriff recommended that you fill this vacancy immediately with his preferred choice and that. At least the topic of discussion for this is because that was what you were planning on doing. The reason that he said he wanted to fill the position was so that he could work with. The person that gets filled and teach them things that they need to know between now and when he leaves in May. Well. I don't think that's a good reason for you to rush into filling this position. So you are aware not only that the state, but the county. Central committees has, you know, a stake in this. By wanting to fill the position just one day after the sheriff announced his, um. That he's quitting is not allowing members to do what their task to do. And you are all members of that committee, so you know what these rules are. Uh, if the VOCC wants to do this correctly, right, in my opinion, you have options available to you. First, I'm glad that you're talking about undersheriff Hill, um. Because it does sound like there are, um, things that he can do, become a resident. And be the sheriff when you nominate the sheriff. But at this point, you don't have to nominate the sheriff. He can stay the undersheriff, okay? And then. Sheriff Byerly can teach him everything that he has to know and then he can pass it on to whoever succeeds him. I know you want to hire somebody fast, but I think at least you should wait for the recommendations of the central committee. Uh, my belief is that you should hire somebody other than one of the two candidates. I know you both, I like you both, you're both fully qualified. Okay, you have different qualifications, but you're both fully qualified to be the sheriff and neither of them should be appointed sheriff. The posse has many retired sheriffs and other peace officers. I don't know if any of the posse members were asked. And just, you know, having this go from yesterday to today didn't really give an opportunity for the posse members to think about it. And people should think about it for more than, you know, a five minute phone call. And, um, you don't have to rush this. I'm sure one of those people would be interested, but you don't know because you haven't asked. Um, if you don't like that idea and you really want one of the candidates, then don't choose one, because you'll be manipulating the election. Ask both, interview both, have them both give you answers in writing so that you can really thoroughly think about this. Because appointing either of these candidates prior to the primary will give them an unfair advantage in the election. So please don't manipulate our election process. If you choose to fill this vacancy, um, I urge you not to fill it with either of the candidates, because without fair elections, we're nothing. Thank you.
Ma'am.
Um, I was not, um, I'm just wondering, I'm sorry, Alyssa Oscar, Alyssa, yeah, yeah. Um, I'm wondering if one of the candidates would be able to accuse themselves from filling that position to keep pressure off of the decision-making?
Vince Falsitis, you're in very short time. And I'll, to Dr. Brand, very qualified, definitely Dr. Rich, also very qualified. Um, my concern, again, sorry, gentlemen, either one is political. And I understand that. Both have very like minds of the community, you want me?
Aggressive words.
What's your name?
Vince Falsitis. Been in law enforcement for twenty-five years, have been through this process before with sheriffs. And I've seen how it affects the electric, electric. Sorry, I couldn't speak today. My concern is we need to find an aide political candidate for, for the position. You have about ten days, I would say, to find this person, reach out to the posse members, reach out to other people who are retired from law enforcement to maybe fill this position, who have the qualifications. Take those people and do the right thing, that way these gentlemen can run a clean campaign. And that's what I would like to see, especially as a citizen in this county. And, and I'm, I'm asking you to do so as our elected commissioners. That way you're being aide politically. Obviously, full of Republicans, we're all Republican Party, same as me. And that, that, as a concerned citizen, that's what I would ask you to do.
Dan Bond Hollingsworth. The first thing I'd like to do is toss out a whole lot of accolades for Shannon Carter for his last seven-plus years of outstanding service. And I would like to say that, that it seems to me that there's a discrepancy between a couple of statues here. And I think we need to get recommended, we need to get a legal opinion about that before we proceed any further. One of my concerns is, I know Brandon Shaw very well, and I know what Brandon Shaw does on the day of elections. His workload is awesome. And he handles it very well. You know, if, if we, if we do what Shannon says and put Brandon in the position, that's a lot of talent that is gonna be vacant, he doesn't want to hurt him, because he will not have the time to spend in the department doing the things that he normally does. So, you know, Brandon may have some comments about that, but I do know how hard this man works. And I know how much he loves this community, and I know how much it means to each of us as American citizens to have integrity in the election process. And as this thing is unfolded, it seems to me that there is a slight political advantage for Shannon, uh, Brandon to be appointed to that position, so I'm not talking against Brandon, you know, you're my buddy, my buddy. But I think that we need to make sure that's counted position, and doing the right thing for the community. And we put a lot of brain cells in this thing and come up with a decision that's gonna be plausible for, one, the sheriff's department, because remember, you know, you're Robert, if I understand right, Robert Hill will still be the undersheriff if, if Brandon's there, so that, that position's covered. I don't know if there's any spool-up process, Brandon won't have to go through it, because he knows what's going on. But I, I think from the election perspective, we need to make sure, you all need to make sure that the election process is not contaminated. So, that's all I got to say.
Back.
Um, my name's Seven Clark, I am Brandon's youngest daughter. I mean, I just wanted to say something real quick, um, just so everybody is aware, it is a requirement for the sheriff to be post-certified, and nobody on the posse is currently post-certified. So, while they are more than qualified, they are post-certified, so that means they cannot be acting sheriff until January. Uh, that does not take away from the qualifications from past duties, that's just the rules right now. Um, I do also think it's important to, for just a second, take into account what is gonna be best for the county when in regards to the sheriff's office. My dad has a relationship with deputies, he has a relationship with all of the other agencies they will be working with. And so, wouldn't it make sense to bring somebody who already has those relationships and not before into the position until January? Whereas bringing somebody else in who doesn't have to, that could cause a, a whole bunch of other issues, communication when it comes to dealing with other agencies, the budget is something that has to be considered, all things that my dad has worked with and known about for the past eight, almost nine years that we've lived here. And so I think it's important to consider that when we are thinking about who we're going to appoint as the sheriff until January. Because we have to do at the end of the day what is best for the community and best for the sheriff's office and the people who work there. And obviously, my opinion is my dad's the best option, but that's gonna be my opinion. And I think that's why we have to slow down, like, think about what we're doing and think about everybody who's involved and not just, oh, how this will look on me, or how this will look on the election. And that's where they are.
Andrew, you had your hand up.
Uh, you currently have a motion on the floor, it's been seconded, but it could be perceived that that motion is politically biased. I would encourage the commissioners to make a substitute motion that incorporates, uh, the tenor of the discussion here, and then forward with that substitute motion.
Lloyd Smith and I am one of the Republican candidates for sheriff, in fact, we're both running for Republicans. Oh, I appreciate what Linda Pollock said earlier about having this interview for the job, but I would not be interested in serving as a interim sheriff. And I think this should be considered more of a temporary, uh, absence of the sheriff to get us from the end of May to the end of June, uh, when the primary is, and then as far as I know, there's no unaffiliated challengers to join the ballot.
Not yet.
But it could happen.
It could happen.
But i- i- if that didn't happen, then perhaps select whoever was the person that, uh, was successful in the primary and then actually start the term, you know, the day of the primary, let the sheriff handle that temporary, uh, absence of, the undersheriff handle the temporary absence of undersheriff.
I have this statement, I asked a couple of friends of mine who are attorneys in Colorado their opinion on this situation and the statute that has been, uh, read or suggested. And they're of the opinion that that statute only applies to elected sheriffs. It does not place a limit on commissioners' ability to appoint a appointed sheriff. So if you choose to appoint a temporary, and I don't wanna use the term temporary, because a sheriff is not a temporary office. Whoever you appoint will be the sheriff of the county. But in this situation, I only use temporary as until the election happens. And it's of their opinion that that statute that's been quoted only applies to people who are elected. And they're of the opinion that the undersheriff could serve in an appointed capacity as the sheriff of the county in the interim. So, uh, opinions are opinions, but I, I think if I was in your position, I would give yourself some time to research and to be certain that undersheriff cannot be appointed to be the sheriff of the county.
Back.
Jay Chai, um, eight years ago, or seven and a half years ago, when Shannon ran, and, um, this same deal was kinda trying to be started, there were several people in the community that were trying to get Fred to step down a few months before the midterm, um, didn't work out that way, so I, I, this isn't a new thing, and I think certain people in this same room were kinda proud of Fred to step down at that time. Um, the other thing I'll speak for, one thing that nobody's really mentioning, Shannon's done an amazing job for us the last seven and a half years. Who are we to go against what his decision is on who should replace him temporarily? I don't think it has anything to do with politics, I've known Shannon a long time. Um, I just think it'd be kind of a gut punch for the sheriff who's had for the last seven and a half years to go against his recommendation.
Of course, great, uh, I, I agree with Jay Chai. I just totally agree with him. Shannon was a great, is a great sheriff, and, and, uh, his recommendation should stand.
Thank you.
So, I have a couple of questions, I totally agree with. About recusing, obviously Rich said that, I'm analyst, sorry, we've been here since twenty nineteen. I really try to be just both sides get information, but people to say this isn't political is ridiculous, it's an election. Of course, it's political. Um, one of the reasons we moved out here, honestly, is because of Shannon. We wanted to come to a county that was a constitutional county, because people were like-minded. I think, um, it's the right idea if they both accuse themselves, it takes that away from the board of being put under that, and it allows the process to happen organically, which I think is what should happen. Um, definitely, you honestly, I mean, so you don't think that Hill is qualified? No. Well, I mean, the fact that she said was that he was the only one qualified, so I'm curious as if Hill's not qualified? I mean, he's been there, correct? Why would that not be in the Bible?
Thank you, Chris. Uh, we're not gonna have a back and forth in the audience, so all comments need to come to us if you can. So, thank you. It's hard to see, so try to raise your hands up high.
I agree, that's a very extremely difficult situation for both of the candidates and Shannon, and especially you gentlemen. You're right, it is absolutely critical. Um, however, I think the most important thing is our safety in the community, making sure that whoever ends up being appointed until January is a person that's going to be able to handle the needs of the community and in a fast and efficient manner. We've already had an early fire start, right? We've got a lot of that going on, so whoever takes over needs to have experience with all of that stuff. We're gonna be in a world of hurt, it's not just gonna be politically based struggles, we're gonna be seeing the rest of the year. I think that Shannon recommending Brandon was probably a very difficult decision for him to make, given that it is political in nature. I mean, Shannon just wrote that letter saying, I'm not endorsing either candidate. He was hit, I got the job, I need to make a decision, what's best for the community? I appreciate all Shannon does and his constitutional beliefs are, um, as well. Okay, I respect the man, but for him to come out and say that Brandon is what he feels would be the best choice, I have to respect that as well. But I will also respect Rich recusing himself, I would respect Brandon if he did the same. Um, I respect Hill as well. But I hope that you all take the time to make the decision on what is best for the county and our safety until we get the replacement figured out.
Andrew just told me it's all up to two. So I just make a shot.
Appreciate it.
I was way up there.
My name is Ellen Wilcox, and I'd like to read something that was forwarded to me last night, allegedly from an elected official that says this is not political. It's perfect timing, Brandon needs to get elected, I said the truth, folks don't like it, and I could care less. Rich should pray, it doesn't blow up. He does, he does not want me to go vote, it will go poorly for him, he knows why, so I hope he corrals folks who think they know better than I. That, to me, sounds very political. And it's from, that's from Shannon Barley. Allegedly.
My name is Baron Brudst. Now, we could go through this past dinner time, the way it's going. I think the best thing to do is have Tom retract his motion. Bring up motion, we will not appoint anybody to the position, we will ask Mr. Hill to kinda cover the footprints if he has to. Up until after the primary. Now, when the primary is over, whoever wins that is probably gonna be the sheriff. Then if you wanna appoint somebody, do it. Like I said, we're gonna be here to dinner at this rate. My stomach is brown.
I respect everybody, my community and our sheriff Barley. His letter of recommendation is merely not a letter of recommendation, not to be belittled or to seem any smaller, but ultimately, it is your responsibility to make this decision, and I ask you to take time to make this decision and not make this decision today. Thank you.
One more time, and I'm gonna wind it down here pretty quick.
I'm ready, so again, I just wanted to say, to then make myself very clear, opening with questions, um, that I sincerely appreciate our, our county commissioners, I appreciate our community the way it is, um, it's one of the reasons why we moved here in two thousand and six. Um, and so I hope that you seriously consider what Andrew Zeller proposed, um, that Baron proposed, because I really think that's the answer to the solution, um, for where we're at right now, without playing or leading into any sort of politics, and then let the people of Custer County vote.
I have one more hand back here.
My name's Al Champion. You guys have a bit of a pickle. I would have to make a guess that probably seventy percent of this county, residents of this county don't know anything about this meeting. Don't know anything about what's going on with this. The office of the sheriff is the most important law enforcement agency in the country. By constitution, it's only elected official in law enforcement. And if you do what you're proposing to do, you will circumvent the election.
He's also a tired law enforcement, so he's very passionate.
I would say here at this time that uh, this has taken place very quickly. We did receive the letter yesterday. Uh, we had looked at mid-month meeting to put this on. At which time, it would have been very close to the time of Shannon's leaving. So we put it back on today because of the fact that he was hoping to be able to train someone else. But it is happening very quickly, what has taken place. I respect Shannon a lot. He has done a wonderful job. I respect his opinion. I respect his recommendation here today. And fully intended to follow that recommendation at the beginning of this meeting. But I believe it would be prudent, and my personal opinion, if we were to postpone this to some degree, to be able to answer a couple of these questions. And to make sure that the decision that we are making is the proper and correct decision for this county. I don't know if you have a gentleman would like to speak now. Before we either take this vote or offer something different.
Yeah, I will, for sure. The discussion's been great, and what I like best of all, both sides of what candidate are really saying the same thing and agree on what is the citizen's view of what should happen. And in fact, the citizen should take into account the qualifications of each person. And that's what you do in the election, and that's the whole point. And I thought it was a great move that both Rich and Brandon did that, were willing to do that. And I also think it's great that Robert Hill's willing to stand in, in whatever capacity. Whether it's as undersheriff for a little while or whether it's as an appointed physician. But I do want to do what you are suggesting. I want to make sure that the timeframe is what it says. And I do have a call into the Secretary of State, the elections, and they're getting back with me on whether that timeline is, whether it's a year requirement or not. I don't, and whether it can be waived or not. And the way I read it, I agree with. And by the way, I operate with attorneys, both in the corporate world and the military. And you're right, it is an opinion. It's only an opinion. The people that are accountable are us, are the military commander or the company CEO. So that's good to hear that there's some opinions that are common there, but we need to get a reading from the, from what is appropriate that we could do to allow undersheriff Hill to be either appointed or to continue as the undersheriff. And I don't know where the five-day limit came from to make the decision. I don't know if that's in the statute for an elected official. I know from them, if a county commissioner resigns, he got X days, and then the Republican Party appoints the commissioner. And then after that, if they don't go, I would like to know what happens if we go beyond five days. You're gonna ask somebody else to step in other than the commissioners, because the state statutes clearly say it's our job to appoint the sheriff, nobody else that I've seen. So I would prefer to wait, get some more data, and postpone this, exactly what you said. And then for a few more days, get some information. So we've got time. Shannon ain't gonna bail until the 20th. And it depends on who we select, both candidates, we got options. And I want them to be able to come back and do the right thing based upon your input and our research. Right?
Thank you, Mr. Joe. I'm the commissioner that entertained the idea of possibly putting this item of business on the mid-month agenda. Didn't get any traction for that yesterday during the meeting. I don't have a problem with that. That's fine. What you tell. I'm the one that suggested that we wait and put that on the mid-month. I don't know. Well, let me back up. First of all, I gotta say, again, I'm cognizant of and appreciate the fact that all of you took time to come in here today to honor the political process. So I think that speaks volumes. I wish we'd had me in the school gymnasium because there were five or six hundred people there. But be that as may, so I do appreciate you guys taking the time to be here. We were elected to do what we believe is right in this county. And make those decisions based on the information that we have. And our belief that's representative of this county. I think we strive for that. I certainly do. I don't know of anyone in this county, anyone in this county that is more qualified to make a recommendation than Shannon Byer. If there is, then I'm missing that. I don't know what goes on in that sheriff's department. I don't know all the ins and outs of that. I had this yesterday that, and I said this in the meeting, I'll have to look that up, that one of the reasons for my wanting to postpone a decision until mid-month was strictly for transparency, to allow this to happen. So that we could sit and listen to the opinions and the suggestions of the citizens of this county. I think we've done that. I think there are facts and then there are opinions. And I hope, as county commissioners, we make decisions based on the facts and listen to the opinions. In my, from my perspective, that's what we've heard today is people's opinions. We've heard the county attorney's legal opinion. Right? And that's what that is. That's his opinion. It's our contracted county attorney. I've sat in six and seven of these meetings and been hammered with quotes out of our constitution and out of the Colorado revised statutes. I don't see a lot of confusion in either one of those documents when it speaks to the responsibility of county commissioners to appoint a sheriff in the event that there's a vacancy now. The Senate Republican Committee certainly is subsequent to the constitution of the Colorado and to the Colorado revised statutes. Part of me wants to say, how much data do we need to collect? How many special interest individuals or special interest groups do we need to listen to before we can make a decision? I don't disagree with some of the things that were said here today. And I do disagree with some of the things that were said here today. So what this board decides to do, I hope they do on what's based on this ideal and principle of what's best for Custer County.
And I don't think I would like to wait until mid-month, maybe, but I would like to clarify in my own mind a couple of things. And I would like to be able to visit with our attorney on a couple of things, and that is I would propose that we set a time this next week to address this issue. So that we do have but not take it outright to, if we wait till our mid-month, we're right at the time of Shannon's leaving. Today is a little too quick. So I would move that we table this motion that is on the floor until and I don't know, before I make this motion, I don't know if we would need to table this motion or if we need to take up the whole issue.
Chairman, first, if you just make that a substitute rather than table tables and official parliamentary, if you just make that as a substitute, and if it gets seconded, then you vote on that, and his motion goes away. And then it's not gonna be considered as being political.
At the point where you cannot attach time to motion, it would have to be, we had to put it on the tender. So I would like to offer a substitute motion that we take up the issue of appointing a replacement sheriff on May 10. My motion would be at 10 o'clock.
I'll second.
I have a motion on the floor to visit this, to visit the appointment of a sheriff's replacement on May 10, at 10 o'clock. Any discussion?
Are you proposing a special?
This will be a special.
We need to see where it's gonna be here, where the time is.
If the courtroom is not available, I would propose this.
I'll still say.
Any discussion from the floor?
I just wanted to say I appreciate your hospitality and your professionalism. Thank you.
Those in favor of addressing this issue on May 10 at 10 o'clock, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And I would like to thank everyone that participated here today. Most part was very well behaved for lack of better terms. Very contentious issue, and I appreciate the restraint that was shown there. Did you say here? If the courtroom is available, it will be here. If the courtroom is not available, we will see you back in Langall.
Thank you. Be kind to public comment again. Kevin Langall was there.
Okay, that brings us back to public comment. If anybody would like to address the board at this time, feel free.
I researched courthouse. Any of this not on the state or federal register? They may have had the centennial celebration, which is when they will placa. But you are not under any state or federal regulations for what you want to do to the courthouse. You may have county people complain, but you're not under any.
We've had a couple of additions make in the original building anyway, so that would be an argument. Don't look up. Anything else?
Do have one. I'd like to present a resolution from this group that we keep Kevin Day, and I pause some prayers. His wife is going through cancer and was in very bad shape. So Kevin, we want to know a prayer for you.
Do appreciate that. So that is something that will take some of my time. Or a lot. So I would ask indulgence from you gentlemen and from everyone here as well. There will be some things that I will not be participating in because I will have another obligation. I will fully attempt to let it appear with this position. And especially the meeting that we have, okay, those are official meetings. Some of the extra group you want to make a lot of the way side, I'm gonna state that here. Thank you. I really appreciate everyone's prayers and support. Anything else? I will adjourn this meeting at 1:01 PM.